I will now call this meeting to order. Trustee Joinator is unable to attend tonight's meeting. We do have a quorum. I will identify closed session topics. Closest in session topics are recommended expulsions, recommended suspended expulsions, public employee assignment, reassignment, appointment, public employee discipline dismissal, release complaints, conference with labor negotiator, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, and anticipated litigation. Is there any public comment on any of these topics? There is no public comment. We'll adjourn to closed session. Good evening. We'll now open our early bird session. And I will introduce the interpreter, linguistic interpreter and translation will serve as the Spanish interpreter for this meeting. Meeting attendees who would like to listen to the Spanish interpretation of the meetings, please pick up headphones from the table located in the back of the meeting room. This meeting room, this announcement will now be shared in Spanish.
Buenas tardes. Linguística Interpreting and Translation se diría como intérprete al español para esta reunión. Invitamos a los asistentes de la reunión que desean escuchar la interpretación al español. Elirpo de audífonos a la mesa ubicada al fondo de esta sala de reuniones. Gracias.
This meeting is being webcast live and recorded. The recording or webcast may capture images and sounds of those attending the meeting. Any member of the public wanting to provide public comment on items listed on tonight's agenda, please fill out the public comment form. It's a green form located at the table in the back of the room. Please hand your form to the administrative assistant, Delia Smart, before the item comes up on the agenda. Please fill out a separate form for each agenda item you'd like to comment on. Members of the public providing public comment, please use the microphone on the stand located in the front of the room. I will now move, continue with enclosure number one. UC Merced College Advising Corps, CAC. That's done at on our general meeting. Yeah. Brandon Gridiron, Administrator of Equity and Student Services.
Good evening, Board Member Girl. Superintendent, Superintendent Cardozo, members of the board. I'm Brandon Gridiron, Administrator of Equity and Student Services. Tonight, we're actually providing an update. This past September, we engaged in a partnership with the Center of Educational Partnership for UC Merced to actually in the advising corps to provide counseling services to our students at Golden West High School. And per the board's requests, they were, we were asked to provide an update on the progress that we were able to make with some of the students over at Golden West High School. And so tonight, we've invited our representatives from UC Merced to actually provide us that update and answer any questions and really kind of discuss next steps. So I'll invite Daniel over to present to you all.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. President Guerrero, interim superintendent Cardozo and members of the board. My name is Daniel Lepe. I am the project director for the College Advising Corps. Here with me, I have our interim associate vice chancellor, Orquíde Largo, and our program advisor for the College Advising Corps, Ana Luis Benavides, former alumni of Mount Whitney High School. So again, thank you for, for having us here today. Today, I want to share some information in regard to our progress this year. And in addition, share the, the vision of the program and give you an update of the status of the College Advising Corps and our partnership here at Visalia Unified School District. So first things first, the Center for Educational Partnerships is basically what houses many pre-college programs, including the College Advising Corps. I want to give you a high level view of who we are. We have programs such as the Early Academic Outreach Program, Trio Town Search, Trio Upward Bound, and the Parent Empowerment Program and the College Advising Corps. The program was first, first started through our SAPEP funding, which is state funding that we received to be able to provide services to students within the Central Valley. And it was first basically developed to be able to increase the number of students applying to the University of California within, within our valley. Our primary goal is to support. Yes? Oh, sorry. Our primary goal is to basically increase college awareness within the, the valley, bring equity and access towards our students, and more than anything, make them aware of their opportunities after high school. So like I mentioned previously, we have a number of programs, as you can see on the screen, ranging from the College Advising Corps to some of our upward bound programs, which are federal programs. Currently, right now, our partnership is a private cost share partnership with the National College Advising Corps. We're one of five programs within the state of California, and we're actually the second one that came into the picture. Currently, we have three different high schools that we serve. Visalia Unified is, or Visalia Unified. Golden West High School is the further south. We also serve a couple of high schools in the city of Los Manos at Pacheco High and Los Manos High. I would say, and I would brag, that our partnership at Golden West has been probably our highest performing. Thank you to Ana Luis for being supportive here and bringing that difference to the students here in, in Visalia. Some of our partnerships within the center, they range everywhere, as you can see. We're at multiple different districts. These partnerships come in different forms. I'd be happy to share more information of what those partnerships look like if, if interested. But again, the main one here is the Corps. So today, the main overview that I'm going to provide for you is talk about the, the, our CAC advisor, introduce you to her. We actually, I also want to share, we have a student here as well to talk a little bit about like how the program, oh, two students here, sorry, that will talk about the program, how I supported them. And you'll be able to ask direct questions to them. I know they, they may be kind of shy, but I think we should always celebrate their successes. So we'll also be going over the program goals. We'll talk a little bit about the initiatives we had previously, the ones we are actually going through right now, and the upcoming ones as well. I will be sharing some college application data, some financial aid application data, and also the progress of where we stand. So, so just to let you know a little bit more about Ana Luis. Ana Luis is located at Golden West High School. She actually has an office in the library. If you walk in, she's the first person on the right side. She is, she's given easy access to the students, and she's there on a full-time basis, providing support to students from seven thirty to four PM. So I think that's one of the main things why we've been, been able to increase what what some people may call the needle when it comes to our key performance indicators and our outcomes for students at Golden West High School. As you can see here, we have six key performance indicators within the, that we have declared within the high school. These key performance indicators are progressive indicators that we actually have to, we have to declare them at the beginning of the year, and they're usually, like I said, progressive. So we try to base them off the prior year goals. So each year, so say we end up at seventy percent this year, maybe next year, we're going to be at seventy-three percent to try to increase the, the college going rates, the application rates, and so on. You'll see green and yellow. So out of the six right now, this is actually based, as of last week, when I created this presentation, we are meeting four out of the six, and we're within five percent of meeting two out of the six. So we're really close. And like I said, it's a very, it can be very challenging at times because we are required to basically serve the whole senior cohort. So Ana Luis is currently is serving three hundred ninety-nine students, where we're trying to push the needle when it comes to that. And we're also trying to bring support to the families. So as you can see here, the first KPI we have is one-on-one meetings. Second is FAFSA completion. Third is FAFSA assistance. The fourth is one or help students apply to one or more college. The fifth is help students apply to three or more colleges. And then the last one is family engagement, which that's one of the ones that we really, we really try to outperform a lot of the other programs, and we actually do a pretty good job. So past initiatives. So this year was a unique year because we were able to collaborate a lot with counselors. They actually welcomed us with open arms. We were able to coordinate UC and CSU application workshops. We were also able to provide support to COS and collaborate with them when it comes to helping students apply and also providing follow-up with the applications. So realistically, Ana Luis, she took on the role to provide a lot of the follow-up related to the matriculation process for students applying for college. In addition, we, we also focused a lot on communication. Within our database, we have some integrations related to like text message communication. We try to be as innovative as possible when it comes to that. Because we all know, I don't know if you all have kids or know of a kid who has a cellphone and how often there are in front of them. We, we try to do what's best to be able to kind of get that message in front of them. And we found that text message actually works really well with students. And another thing we found out is that it works really well with the parents. Because sometimes, I don't know if you felt like you received that weird phone call from your car insurance expiring or something. We, we do the text messages so I can know that it's somebody from the College Advising Corps providing support, support for them and their student. In addition, one of their initiatives that we actually have this week is our college signing week, where we're recognizing students, not only for, for them declaring a university that they're going to attend, but also for declaring their plans after graduating from high school. We're recognizing students that are going into the workforce. We're recognizing students that are going into the military and, you know, different avenues. So now let's talk numbers. As you can see above, we've already met with ninety-eight percent of our senior class. To be exact, it's three hundred ninety-one students. Here on this report, it's reflecting four hundred students, but we ran the numbers today, and we're actually at three hundred ninety-nine students enrolled as seniors. Out of those three hundred ninety-one students, we've been able to serve ninety-nine percent of them, or three hundred eighty-nine at a one-on-one level. And the other two that we're claiming as well, they have been able to be served at least at a group setting. So they've been a part of one of our workshops or one of our group initiatives in, in place. So continuing on, as far as our program goes, we've already been able to support three hundred and two students out of the whole senior class apply for college. We are pretty ambitious when it comes to our three or more application data, and we've been able to only meet with up to around twenty percent of our, or let me rewind, about twenty percent of our students have submitted three or more. That for me is a work in progress. Usually in our first year, we all, we always try to do our best to establish the, the college going culture to increase that number. I've noticed that some of my other sites, we still keep the, the performance indicator at twenty-five percent as the goal. Because again, we try to strive, we strive for more, and it gives us a true north to be able to really support our students. Another thing I do want to share, this data is based off of actual reports that we're receiving directly from UC, CSU, Community College, and the CCGI tool, the California Colleges Tool. So out of the students we've actually served, as you can see here, twenty percent have not submitted a college application. In this case, we try to record as much as we can why they're not applying. Again, some of them have been eyeing the workforce, some of them have been eyeing the military, some of them have been eyeing joining an apprenticeship with the labor union or something like that. But for the most part, out of all of the students that we met with, sixty-four percent have applied to one or more, and an additional sixteen percent have applied for, or no, take that back. And from those three hundred students, seventy-six of them have applied to three or more colleges or universities. Yes. So this, I know it's small, I wish you could see, I wish we could zoom in a little bit more, but this slide actually shows the progress of twenty twenty-one graduating class and the current class of twenty twenty-two when it comes to their financial aid completion progress. We've actually gone up seventeen percent from last year to this year. I'm really proud of that. Where, that's where I, well, I always toot the horn for my staff. We try to recognize these accomplishments. We try to recognize the school because Golden West has gone from one of the lowest financial aid completers to one of the highest within the district. I wouldn't say that it's only us, because again, we also had the support from the counselors. We have support from teachers. We've been working with each other. We've been working with Ms. Dirksen to be able to create the space for the students. As far as our students who have, who have been served, we've been able to support around seventy-one percent of our students when it comes to financial aid. And, and actually seventy-one percent of students, we certainly have submitted an application. So what we've noticed is the more we meet with the students, the more likely they're able to submit. Out of that, that group that we've served, only seven percent have actually an application in process. So what we try to do, we try to use them as our target students to be able to, you know, increase that seventy-one percent and that sixty percent school-wide to be able to, to be able to get a real number of where the, the class is performing. I know that many of us have the impression that March second is the deadline for financial aid, for FAFSA, but it's actually June thirtieth. The March second deadline is the Cal Grant deadline, so that applies more to our Dream Act students. Another thing, another question y'all had, and I want to answer it now, is that when it comes to the data that we show within our system, we never separate FAFSA and Dream Act, because we don't want to single out certain students and put them in a place where it may become uncomfortable with if they have identifiers of being undocumented. So out of that group who receives final, financial aid assistance, twenty-two percent are in progress. So that number, it can be increasing, you know, from here on to the end of the year, because we're still targeting these students to try to support them with financial aid. And again, Ana Luis's contract is over on June thirtieth, so we try to work our, our objectives even after the students graduate from high school. So parent engagement, this is something that we really look forward to accomplishing as a program. So far this year, we've been able to serve one hundred forty-two families. So if you have a parent that's a senior, you should have received either a text message, a phone call, an email from us in regard to your student and some of our initiatives. If your student has not submitted a FAFSA or a Dream Act, you've actually received some sort of communication asking if you need support, because we're inviting also parents to provide that support one-on-one at the site. Out of the families that have received the service, seventy-seven percent of their students have completed a college application. Out of the families that have received the service, seventy-four percent have received, completed a financial aid application. So it kind of almost lines up from college applications to financial aid. And we're always trying to close that gap to assure that students are getting that support. Out of the families that we have served, twenty, or sixteen percent of them have an application in progress. And out of those we have served, only nine percent have no application on file. So ongoing, what are we doing right now? We're continuing to support students with financial aid. We're still helping students apply for community college. We're helping with the COS registration. So there's students that have applied but still haven't registered for classes yet. So Ana Luis is doing what she can to provide registration and support for students. We're also supporting students sign up for counseling, because when it comes to the whole process of applying to community college, there's a registration to go process. So they have to, for one, apply, two, have advising, three, do an, or, or, two is orientation, three is advising, then they'll get their registration date, and then they'll register for college. So what are we doing? We're informing students about this so they could go through the process and feel comfortable, you know, having someone that's there to support them, you know, during the day and after school to go through the whole process. So our hopes is to really not only increase college application going rates, but also persistence rates. Hopefully, we have students actually enrolling and set, and setting foot in, in the community college. So now I have this, this slide. The, the College Advising Corps has been going through a transition period when, when it comes to our design. There's going to be, there may be some changes that we may be going through. One of the routes that we're looking into is to bring a new model. And the reason being is because there's a lot of changes coming back from National College Advising Corps that don't align with our model for students in the community. Our focus is more to be able to bring change in our communities, change in the schools in a way where we're able to someday work ourselves out of our job, because we're able to help the high school be able to establish initiatives that they could adopt and implement on their own. And with that being said, I want to talk about a longstanding model that we have within the center, which is the Early Academic Outreach Program. The Early Academic Outreach Program was established in two thousand. It provides ongoing academic advisings to students. We focus a lot on the A three G requirements. So one of the key things we do is, is to inform students where they stand when it comes to A three G, and also, so they could have an idea of what they're eligible for. I don't know, I, I haven't shared this with you, but this year, we only had sixty-three students apply to the CSU from Golden, Golden West High School. We had only around twelve students apply to the UC. For us, I mean, given that the UC is so close and the CSU is so close, I think that twelve out of three hundred ninety-nine students, we find that to, we deem that to be a little bit low, based off of the records that we have. And programs like the Early Academic Outreach Program can, can bring not only that support for a cohort, but they could also bring support for the counselors, because we could also continue to provide support and initiatives like UC application workshops, CSU application workshops, and other items similar to the College Advising Corps. So with that being said, our program is a cohort program. We have it designed in a way to serve thirty-five students regardless of their residency status. We never close the door for a student who needs support. We never close the door for counselors that need support with either us facilitating a workshop or us finding someone that could facilitate a workshop. The Early Academic Outreach Program also has objectives tied to UC application information, enrollment, and also A three G completion. So when it comes to that, we'd be able to kind of come in, provide support to middle-tier students who are on the cusp of being A three G on track, what we call A three G subject borderline, to try to get them from like being a little below A three G to fully A three G. And it's very strategic. And again, it's in a way to be able to bring those changes within your district. Currently, we are collaborating with fourteen different high schools. And again, these supports can be here if that's a, a model that you would want to consider. Okay? And so I want to open this opportunity for discussions, maybe use this opportunity to have some of our students share a little bit more about their experience and where they're going to go for, to college and things as such.
So can we have your students do that?
Yeah.
And then we'll ask the questions.
Hello?
Hello?
My name is Dawn Kim. I'm a senior at Golden West High School. I'll be attending Princeton University this year.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much for inviting me. Well, this year has been incredibly different from my freshman year. I haven't been on campus for two years. I was online on Zoom. And when I came on campus, I thought it would be the same as it was freshman year. However, it was incredibly different. The first difference I noticed when I walked into the library was a new plaque on a classroom door, which said CAC and Ana Luis's name. And I thought, what is CSC? I walked in and I talked to her and I walked out. And I thought, how incredible is it for our new Golden West generations to experience this support system that I never had my freshman year or anytime else? In fact, I have visited the psychologist's office quite a bit of time during my COVID school times, and I've talked to my counselors so many times. Every Monday and every Thursday, I'll walk into her office and ask her about new questions about college admissions, course selections, COS courses, et cetera. But oftentimes, I felt like it was not as personalized as I wanted to be. Of course, they're incredibly qualified people. However, they have so much students that they need to be responsible for, which is understandable. So Ana Luis gave me support that I could never imagine having. She gave me immediate answers to, that I needed. Ana Luis hasn't, it hasn't been long since she graduated COS, so she could give me a lot of advice about COS staffs, counselors, and courses that my counselors could never give me. She taught me how to register for classes as COS. She taught me about the CSU system, the UC system that I'm not familiar of, since I'm from a different country. She understood my diverse background and my untraditional way of coming to America. And she could understand that, coming from her personal background. Not only she provided a safe space for me in her office, I could go walk in anytime I needed, and I could tell her about my day, I could tell her about my problems. And she never said no whenever I asked her for support or emotional support or some advice on what to do, that I could not get from my friends. But she was almost like a peer supporter, except she was much more mature and responsible, and she knew how it was to be a teenager. But she also, she is also an adult who can actually guide me through things from my point of view, which was very special to me. But not only was she a great emotional support and a friend, she was, I was surprised on how qualified she was for her job. She knew everything. She knew how the college system works. She knew how Common App worked, which is so difficult to navigate. I think our counselors are very well, well-versed in the UC application, of course. We live in California, but the Common App or any other system, I don't think I could have got as much support I could have from Ana Luis than anyone else. And also, Daniel and Ana Luis introduced me to so many workshops that I could attend, where I asked millions and millions of questions. I had UC Merced people read my essay millions and millions of times. I attended every session, and luckily, I could, I was accepted to UCLA, UC Berkeley, and UC San Diego, and UC Santa Barbara. And I loved it there, but I ultimately chose Princeton, and Ana Luis helped me on that way, too. I have so much more stories to tell. My friend Jeremy, he had a problem with Fresno State about some communication issues. And Ana Luis was the person who stayed online on the customer service voice line for hours just for them to not respond, but she was there. She, she had passion. She actually cared about us. And I don't think any other adult at Golden West had the time to do that. Of course, they might have the hard to do it, but Ana Luis was there for us for this specific thing. Any questions will be very welcomed.
Any questions from the board?
No, just thank you for sharing your story. It really helps us to understand. You kind of brought the presentation to life, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to know who Ana Luis is at. You stand up so everybody could see you. And thank you, Ms. Chen, for your comments.
I just want to say thank you for giving me this opportunity to come to VUSD. Before I started this job, I was dead set on being a history teacher, a history professor, but now working with students like Dawn and Eliza, I feel that I need to be a counselor. Like this was my calling, that God put me on this earth for this reason. So I feel so good and feel so welcome here. This doesn't feel scary at all. I feel very much happy to be here, and I thank you guys for giving this opportunity again.
Well, thank you.
I have a question. Yeah. Oh, yeah, we can clap for you again. I just, I, going back to slide fifteen, when it talks about family engagement and the services you provide to families, I was just wondering what specifically you did for family engagement?
Okay, so a lot of the students at Golden West are first generation, so their parents don't have, they understand financial aid somewhat, so I kind of explained it further to them, especially parents of undocumented students, because they really, really don't know. Same thing with the college application process. They are a little bit intimidated by it. They think maybe they have to pay a lot of money, or maybe, you know, bad things could happen if they... They are a little bit intimidated by it. They think maybe they have to pay a lot of money or maybe, you know, bad things could happen if they go to college. It's just easier to stay in their comfort zone and I try to encourage them, um, let them know the positives of going to college. I was a first-generation college student myself. Um, I completely understand where they're coming from. I've experienced it. Like I, every argument their, a parent has had, my parents had, so I completely understand. So I know how to like work around the parent and help them. And of course, Daniel's helped me too with that as well. It, it wasn't just all me.
So those services are like you making phone calls to the family or maybe them coming in and talking.
Right, emailing them as well. Um, I had one mom who was just so desperate to get her son to just think about his future. So um she came onto campus and Mia had like about like a thirty-minute meeting of different career options, not just, you know, getting his AA degree at COS. But maybe I'm going into um IT work, because he was really into computers. So um I just kind of, I don't want to necessarily say counseling, but like advising, if you want to do this, let me show you all the opportunities you have. Um, so emailing, text message, calling, a lot of the times, it's very interesting.
Great, thank you so much.
Yeah, I, I want to say I appreciate um you mentioning personalization of that. Because uh I was one of those students where neither of my parents went to college. I remember filling out my F A S in two thousand and twelve and then getting to a specific section that said social security number of your parents. And I freaked out. I was like, oh my God, I can't go to college. My, my parents are undocumented. What am I gonna do? And so the fact that you're working with, you know, students and getting through this, especially like EB five forty students, I think is uh amazing. Um, I had a question, uh, Daniel, you mentioned, you know, our need to increase UC and CSU applications and eligibility. You mentioned some of those students who are sort of borderline A three G, um, and, and maybe you can speak to this as well or anyone, um, even our, our students as well. What did you typically find was the reason? I know you're working with them at, when they get to their senior year. Was it um a, you know, I wasn't aware that I needed this specific A three G class to, like, you CSU, UC weren't on my radar? Um, is it, is it a combination of those aspects or what do you think you most commonly saw are some of those themes with those students?
Okay, so, um, sorry. We have close to a forty percent A three G completion rate um within Los Bando Unified. Correct me if I'm wrong. Um, what we noticed is just awareness, lack of awareness, lack of knowing that UC is an option. And um I would share this, um, and also access to having experts um who know how to complete the UC application per se. Um, at first, when we first uh showed up, I guess, if you want to say that, we didn't have any UC application workshops set up. So I, right away, I noticed that and I connected with the assistant principal. And, and we were able to set up some application workshops where we came in and facilitated them. Um, it started with one UC application workshop and then eventually it just transitioned to general college application workshops. Because again, we just wanted to create that space of applying to the four E universities. And we feel that um just creating the space, having open access to students. Um, for one, it creates an opportunity to go. And we're not only designating, we're being nimble and we're being creative in a way where we're able to provide support in all um applications.
Any other questions?
I, I'd just like to say thank you. Um, I was at Golden West for many, many years, so I still know a lot of people there. And Annalise, they have so appreciated you there. So thank you for what you're doing for our students.
Thank you.
What was that?
We have one more student.
Okay.
Yes, and she's like, no, don't call me over.
Hi, my name is Eliza Adelina Fernandez. Um, I'm a senior at Golden West High School. Um, first generation and low income and actually remember Mr. Gridiron from La Jolla. Hi, I'm graduating. So, um, I wasn't avid since, um, I wasn't avid in seventh grade, but couldn't do an eighth grade because of room and classes. But then I joined again in freshman year, so I had like that experience with like college um applications, college housings. F A S A, but on my senior year, when I moved, I didn't have room for avid at Golden West. Because I was recently at Eldi Amonte. And I was stuck right there because it's my senior year and I don't have my avid teacher for help. Or to help me out through the process of applying to colleges, because I thought she was gonna be here with me, but then I moved. And that is until I got a pass to uh Annalise's um office. And then I was just like, it's like avid all over again. So I, I actually got the help that like I needed because I was clueless. My mom and my dad didn't go to college. None of my family ever did. I only had one aunt though, but she dropped out on her first semester and she doesn't recall much. So, and my dad is not really part of my life right now. So it is just my mom and my stepdad and my dad's a fourth-clip driver, my mom's a hairstylist. So we struggle with financial um issues. And I was scared that I will even be able to go to college because I thought it was gonna be very expensive. But with the reassurance with Annalise and letting me know like it is possible, you can do it. And letting me know like, oh, you actually did get the Cal Grant. I was like, what? What is that? And then she let me know, I was like, I never been told about this. So I learned a lot of new things that I didn't even know, even in the avid program. I shared me information that can actually help me write better essays. And how to uh find different types of scholarships for, for different types of um activities. Like for band music, like if you did music for four years, then there's a scholarship for that. I didn't, I wasn't aware. So with the help with um with Annalise and David, I was able to to apply to colleges, apply for F A S A. And I decided that I'm gonna go to CSU Northridge um this upcoming summer in the E O P program. Which I didn't even know what the E O P program was either, until she told me, she was like, you should definitely do it. It helps you. It definitely works for your background and everything. And I was like, I should do this. So I did the interview and did the, the process of it, getting the recommendations. And they said that, they said yes, uh, I can be part of the program and be starting this summer for summer classes, the transitional program. So I, the first in my family to be doing all these things. And if I, it would have been possible if it wasn't for Annalise, I would have been very clueless, including my mom. And we both value like her time because she, I consider her as a friend. Because like Dawn mentioned before, is that it's very easy to like get through, through her. Because with my counselors and school psychologists, it was very hard to get through appointments. I would have to wait weeks or like a month to even see them and then deadlines already passed. So with Annalise, it's like, oh, you need to see me? Well, I got an opening today. And I'm like, great. So it was very, it was very helpful and in that case. So I really appreciate um what they've been doing and yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I, I would just like to thank the board honestly for approving this partnership. This is important work. Um, I high-five Mr. Vaca over there because I'm always gonna champion and tout for our counselors in our district. They do some amazing work and this is an example of, uh, you know, if you want to see equity in action, this is exactly what that is, right? Um, giving kids opportunities by removing barriers so they have opportunities to be successful in their future. And so thank you to UC Merced, thank you to Golden West for the partnership. And our hope is to continue to expand these types of services across our districts to other schools. So that they truly have access to have these same opportunities. Um, and it's exciting to see a student that I watched walk across the stage as an eighth grader and now walk across the stage as a senior and go off to college. So thank you guys so much for that. So Brandon, that wa, that was my question in terms of how can we expand to our other, our other high schools? We have more than Golden West. There's Mount Whitney, Redwood, Eldi Amonte, V C I S, V Tech. For sure. And so one of the things that we actually talked about is, um, this was a pilot to see how it worked at Golden West. And obviously you see that there was great success there. And so now we, what we'll do engage in conversations about what this looks like across our district. Bring back a proposal for what this could look like as, as far as an expansion. Um, and then, and then spread it out across our district. Um, as Daniel mentioned, our goal is honestly to, you know, work ourselves out of this partnership. Because this is something that we just sustain in our campuses, um, but they have a great model that allows to do that. So what I'll do is work with them and bring it back uh for a proposal for, continue. Well, thank you and we thank you for the presentation unless there's any other board members that have any questions or comments. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda in this early bird session is A three G completion improvement grant planned for Visila. Charter Independent Study, V C I S, and Visila Technical Early College, V Tech, enclosure number two. And Principal Bill Davis and Principal Michelle Reed.
Good evening, board. My name is Michelle Reed. I'm principal of Visila Charter Independent Study. Um, that's a very hard presentation to follow. That was pretty amazing, so. Well, we'll, we'll keep ours a little shorter and sweeter. Um, so tonight we're here um with my colleague Bill Davis to discuss the A to G completion grant. Um, that uh we are being allocated, forgot my little handy dandy. Um, so currently the allocation is as follows, so V C I S is being allocated one hundred seventy thousand dollars nine, or one hundred seventy thousand nine hundred fifty-seven dollars. V Tech, one hundred fifty thousand dollars. Um, and then for a little background on our sites, in two thousand and twenty-one, um, the V C I S A to G completion rate was five point nine percent. And V Tech's uh was eleven point one, so clearly we've got some work to do in these areas. All right, and so to be able to get started on this, we had to look at some of our root causes. Um, why are A to G rates so low? Um, and so some of the things that were identified was the lack of students and parental understanding of the A to G. And its impact on college readiness for students. Um, so we're finding that a lot of families don't really understand that process and what that actually means. Uh, there's also a lack of specific outreach to all students, leading to these students focusing on minimal graduation rates or requirements. And so they're not necessarily looking at the bigger picture. They've got their blinders on and they're looking for that, uh, just getting across that graduation line. And not realizing the importance of the A to G completion. Um, and then current policies that do not match A to G requirements. Um, so specifically our mathematics requirement, um, they have to have a three-year. And so trying to talk students into that third year can be kind of difficult. Um, and then there's also a lack of ro, robust credit recovery and acceleration options for students to achieve and or maintain A to G on-track readiness. Um, and then there's also a lack of access to early college, so this is your concurrent and dual enrollment um opportunities for all students. All right, I'm gonna pass this on to Mr. Davis.
All right, good evening everyone. Very happy to be able to share with you this mo, this evening. Um, after looking at all the root causes and really examining uh why our numbers were where we were. And, and also working with the district and, and exploring their A to G uh completion grant. We uh settled on these recommendations and it was actually really nice to be able to work with uh Principal Reed. Uh, because we could kind of bounce things off of each other. Sometimes as a charter, you're sort of alone. So it was really nice to be able to work with her directly and, and get this plan going. So our recommendations are to uh expand our dual enrollment opportunities and provide dual enrollment opportunities for students. And looking at uh either textbook purchases, uh transportation materials, et cetera, that students might need with uh dual enrollment uh classes. We provide transportation currently at V Tech to the COS campus for some of our classes. And um we would like to be able to expand that. Another opportunity or another recommendation was uh out-of-school opportunities for A to G credit recovery and acceleration. During COVID, a lot of our students struggled and uh that struggle uh is evident in our, our A to G completion rate for two thousand and twenty-one. So looking at how can we recover, recover credits and also provide uh acceleration opportunities for our students. Um, allocate funds for college visits for all students, uh, all student populations. And this really uh lends itself to our previous presentation. A lot of our students just don't know. Um, and, and we always, I always say, I, I, I don't know what I don't know. And I think a lot of our students just don't know what's going on out there when it comes to college, whether it's a UC, a CSU, or even our local community colleges. So we really want to get, take advantage of that. Um, we've uh working together with uh Principal Reed and myself, looking at how we can team up to share transportation costs. So we can make it more uh affordable for us and be able to get students out to see some of our uh colleges here in the, in the area. And then outside of the area as well. Um, and then development of promotional materials for parents and students on creating a college-going culture for all. We really want to start pushing that, you know, we, we talk at V Tech about being uh V Tech, but we forget sometimes that uh in there is an early college. And so we really want to begin to talk about the opportunities that A to G, um, the A to G um rec, opens up for students. And the opportunities that it, it allows them after uh high school and the, the options that it gives them after high school. And then just looking at what the benefits are. And so whether it's community college or CSU or again, UCs, we really want to make sure and start spreading that word. Uh, promotional banners, informational uh things around campus that we can share with our students. And then lastly, partner with colleges Sequoias to hire a partner COS student uh success liaison to, to support V C I S students. This is a position we currently have, the boards approved the M O U of a while back. We have a full-time COS person on our site that works directly with our students. And we found it extremely advantageous to their su, success. Our numbers since she started have gradually grown. We have more students next fall than we have this current spring that'll be taking uh early college classes. So just having that person on campus, helping build that uh college-going culture is really important. And then lastly, you can kind of see our breakdown of our costs. We went ahead and put them together since we're presenting together. So dual enrollment uh opportunities, looking at about thirty thousand dollars for V Tech and, and fifteen for V C I S. Out-of-school opportunities, again, funding there in, around forty thousand for V Tech and fifteen for um V C I S. Um, and then funds for college visits. We're gonna try to do our best again to try to uh tag-team on those and, and uh share the costs on those visits. Because sometimes we can't fill two buses, but uh together we could probably fill three buses, which would be outstanding to be able to get some students out. To visit some college campuses. Uh, development and promotional materials and working within our district, we have a fantastic print shop. And some very talented designers there to just share our message and let them kind of run with it. Uh, and help us with that, uh, along with our area administrator, uh, Mr. Vaca. Uh, and then lastly, working with COS to develop that success liaison for uh V C I S. And so they've allocated funds for that as well. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Board have any questions or comments?
I have a comment. I just, I love that college-going culture. Um, when I visit some of the elementary schools like um Crowley, uh Houston, they have, that's a big deal, colleges. And so maybe, you know, getting that all through.
Yeah.
That, um, that culture going, so thank you.
I just wanted to ask, um, in your experience, you know, how, how helpful is it for students, you know, providing that transportation from V Tech to COS? Do you see students taking advantage of it and um, you know, how has that, that process been so far?
It's been really uh positive for us. We have um a number of our freshmen started uh in the fall semester, taking uh early college classes on campus. Uh, after school, which was great and it was a nice transition because they were still sort of safe. Um, and then this spring, when we offered the transportation, we were off, able to access a psychology class that was on, otherwise inaccessible for our freshmen. So right now, we average twenty students at a time taking the bus on Tuesdays and Thursdays to campus. Uh, between upperclassmen and freshmen and they really appreciate it. It's been, it's been a big help. And, um, and it's also been nice because it's that kind of gradual release of the students. So they took a class on campus, now they're at the main campus and pretty soon they'll start to be able to travel on their own when they have access to their own transportation.
I just wanted to say thank you for that, but I also wanted to, because it's not often I get both you here in a boardroom. I wanted to recognize them. They recently both had a WASC visit and, and uh I had the good fortune to go into both of the reports on that. And both teams walked out of there like, never seen anything better. So they both got six years accreditation, um, so just wanted to recognize them both for that and thank them for their work, so well done.
Thank you. This was information only. You'll come back for a second read. Now I have a question for the board, if they want to take a five-minute break or if they want to just go ahead and continue. What was that? Five-minute break, okay. We'll adjourn for five minutes. We'll be back at seven thirty-five. Five-minute break? Okay. We'll adjourn for five minutes. We'll be back at seven thirty-five. Okay. I will call our meeting to order. Welcome. We will now convene the regular session. Trustee Joy Naylor and Student Representative Brel Alvaras are unable to attend this meeting tonight. I will introduce interpreter. Linguistica, interpreter and translation will serve as a Spanish interpreter for this meeting. Meeting attendees who would like to listen to the Spanish interpretation of the meeting, please pick up headphones from the table located in the back of the meeting room. This announcement will now be shared in Spanish.
Linguistica, interpreting and translation servirá como intérprete al español para esta reunión. Invitamos a los asistentes de la reunión que desean escuchar la interpretación al español al ir por audífonos a la mesa ubicada al fondo de esta sala de reuniones. Gracias.
This meet, this meeting is being webcast live and recorded. The meeting or webcast may capture images and sounds of those attending the meeting. Any member of the public wanting to provide public comments and items listed on tonight's agenda, please fill out the public comment form. It's a green form. It's located on the table on the back of the room. Please hand your form to the to the administrative assistant, De La Smart, before the item comes up on the agenda. Please fill out a separate form for each agenda item you'd like to comment on. Members of the public providing public comment, please use the microphone on the stand located in front of the room. Okay, Walter Gemonian will now lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Okay, I will report items in closed session today. The first item I will report in a closed session on a motion by Board Member Gemonian and a second by Board Member Casebehr Saleno. The board agreed to, on a vote of six, yes, one zero, that's no nays, and one absent to appoint Desiree Crabtree to the position of principal of full-distance learning program at Royal Oaks Elementary. Ms. Denise Crabtree has been serving as the elementary assistant principal at Royal Oaks for the last two years. Prior to her current assignment, she worked as an intervention teacher at Green Acres Middle School, as an elementary school teacher at Crestwood Elementary and Houston Elementary Schools for a total of sixteen years. In addition, Ms. Crabtree spent three years teaching fourth and fifth grades in out-of-state before returning to California. Ms. Crabtree attended Colleges Sequoias, where she had completed her general education coursework. She went on to earn her Bachelor of Arts degree in liberal studies from Fresno Pacificus University. Ms. Crabtree earned a multiple subject teaching credential with a CLAD authorization and a master's in arts degree in school administration and educational leadership from Chapman University. She also holds a preliminary administrative credential. On behalf, on behalf of the Board of Trustees, congratulations, Ms. Crabtree. Okay, we have another action taken in closed session on a motion by Board Member Blair and a second by Board Member Gabby. The board agreed by a vote of six, yes, and one absent to appoint Michelle Reed to the position of Director of Expanded Learning. Is Michelle still here? Okay, Michelle Reed currently serves as Principal of Visila Charter Independence Study. She has held this position since 2015. Prior to her current assignment, she served as as Assistant Principal for two years and a Learning Director for four years, both at Visila Charter Independent Study. Ms. Reed began her career teaching fourth and fifth grade at Snowden and Freedom Elementary Schools in Farmersville for seven years. Ms. Reed attended Colleges Sequoias, where she received an Associate's of Arts in Liberal Studies. She went on to earn her Bachelor of Arts in Liberal Studies, multiple subject teaching credential with a CLAD authorization, a Master of Arts degree in education administration and supervision, and a Clear Administrative Credential from California State University Fresno. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, congratulations to Michelle Reed. Okay, we have revisions to our agenda and enclosure items. There are revisions to handouts for this evening. The enclosure items are enclosures number six, enclosure number ten, enclosure number eleven, enclosure number twelve, enclosure fourteen, and enclosure twenty-nine. I will ask for a motion to pull up, pull two items from the general agenda. These items are being pulled because staff is still working to resolve an issue of developer two, the fees for Tulare County Building Industry Association. Items being pulled are item number thirteen point three, enclosure thirty, which is a public hearing resolution adopting level-two school facilities needs analysis. And then enclosure number thirty-one, which is item number thirteen point four, public hearing, resolution increasing level-two developer fees and adoption of CICA notice exemption.
All second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. All in favor?
Board Member Blair?
Yes.
Board Member Casebehr Saleno is absent right now. Board Member Gabby, yes. I vote yes. President Guerrero?
Yes.
Board Member Vegas?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero two absent.
Okay, we're going to move on to public comment, public interest announcements, and status reports in action. So the next item would be spotlight on good things happening in District enclosure number three. Interim Superintendent Doug Cardoza and guest presenters.
Guess that's on. Good evening, Board President Guerrero, Board members in our community. Doug Cardoza, interim superintendent, by state unified. Tonight, we do another spotlight on great things happening in our district. One of the first things we want to look at, we had our track season. So we had our elementary track season, which is always a fun time. We want to thank staff and volunteers for helping to make this track season a success. You all joined together as an incredible team to provide great experience for all of our elementary school track students. They were all champions. They did such a great job. It's just a great spirit out there. We do want to recognize some photos of different things that happened at our track meet. So there's some images. We also want to recognize our champions. So our championship team was Hurley Elementary School was first place. Shannon Ranch was second, Denton third, Manuel F. Fernandez was fourth, Elbow Creek fifth, and Oak Grove was sixth. So great job to all of our champions in the elementary track. I also wanted to spotlight that we have our Slick Rock Film Festival. This is an event that will happen on May thirteenth, open at five forty-five. The awards ceremony begins at six fifteen. And I believe this is free. It's at our Fox Theater. So go check it out. It's quite a opportunity to see the work that our kids do. Continuing with our spotlight, we had our Science Olympiad event. We had some results. Division A results were Oak Grove Elementary took a second place. Hurley Elementary took a fourth place, and Annie R. Mitchell took a fifth. In the Division B results, Ridgeview Middle School took first place. Green Acres Middle School team took second, team two took third place, and Green Acres team three took fourth place. There are results on the website there that you can go look through TCOE and see all of the individual results from the Science Olympia. And I think we have a, maybe Brody Macias is here. So let's give him a round of applause for being on that team. The next thing we wanted to spotlight is our Math Super Bowl. We had a lot of kids and teams involved in this. So I'm going to kind of quickly go through some of the different recognitions that we have. So we have a superior team recognition. At Oak Grove Elementary, we had Julianne Arakaki, Sarah Butte, Paula Carafell, Emma Diaz, and Kayden Duncan. Another superior team at Green Acres was Caleb Spink, Scarlett Boyle, Landon Gunter, Michaela Pasquini, and Strider Gailey. At La Jolla Middle School, we had Adriana Esteban, Annie Yon, Elodie Taylor, Phoenix Nunez, and Preston Young. At Oak Grove Elementary, we had Emma Featherstone, Bianca Lumpas, Amvir Moltani, Ford Tavay, and Randy Velasco. At Ridgeview Middle School, we had Amaya Chavez, Beau Scholl, again, Brody Macias. Good job, Brody. And Michaela Mountstam and Sharish Hirani. Again, another spotlight here on our Math Super Bowl seventh grade. Our top team was Brody Macias and Caleb Spink. There were a couple of other kids that were involved in that from other schools or other districts. But we wanted to highlight these two guys. So again, good job, Brody and Caleb. Again, our spotlight, our Math Super Bowl seventh grade top team, Julianne Arakaki, Sarah Butte, Paula Carafell, Emma Diaz, and Kayden Duncan. So again, there they are. Applause for them. Also, in our Math Super Bowl, our eighth grade team, top team was John Woo Kim, Nathan Zatino, and Isabel Wu. On our excellent team recognition in Math Super Bowl for seventh grade, Green Acres Middle School had an excellent team. Angela Bombella, Chloe Miller, Patrick Bixler, Valeria Rojas Perez, and William Schaefer. For Ridgeview Middle School, again, excellent team recognition. Andrew McHale, Bryce Melgar, Jadvir Sangha, and William Reardon. So congratulations to seventh grade teams. The superior team recognition, recognition for math, eighth grade, Super Bowl. Ridgeview Middle School, Isabel Wu, Jung Woo Kim, and Nathan Zatino. An excellent team recognition was Oak Grove Elementary, Aaron McDonald, Gavin Oblod, Mia Larson, Zachary Tamuka, and Haley Uraina. So round of applause for them as well. Our Math Super Bowl overall, seventh grade overall Power Bowl winners were Brody Macias of Ridgeview Middle School. He placed third place overall. William Schaefer at Green Acres Middle School, fifth place overall. Sarah Butte, Oak Grove Elementary School, small schools, first place overall. Julianne Arakaki, Oak Grove Elementary School, small schools, fourth place overall. And Ford Tavay, Oak Grove Elementary School, small schools, fifth place overall. So congratulations to them as well. And last but not least, our eighth grade overall Power Bowl winners for Math Super Bowl overall. Francisco Salazar from Green Acres Middle School took first place. Jung Woo Kim from Ridgeview Middle School took second place. And Emerson Minnick, Green Acres Middle School, took fifth place. So round of applause for all of our kids. Just a lot of kids involved. So it's good to see that involvement at our schools and kudos to the staff that make that happen for them and parents. So thank you for that. All right, I want to call up. Our next spotlight is on our Mount Whitney High School Academy of Health Science at Mount Whitney. I'd like to call up Teresa Polich and Tim Parata.
President Guerrero, Board members, community, and interim Superintendent Cardoza. It's our pleasure to be here. It's so exciting to be a work-based learning coordinator during these times. Currently, we are putting one hundred and twenty-five students out for summer internships. And I got to thank the community and VUSD for those opportunities. And the academy that leads the placements is actually Tim Prada, who I'm proud to introduce tonight, the Academy of Health Science. Thank you, Tim.
Thanks, Reese. That was brief.
That was brief.
I didn't think she could. You know, Teresa, just wanted to thank you for having me here tonight. We've had some challenges in the last couple of years. This is the first time in a year and a half now, we've actually been able to send students out to do internships for obvious reasons. The hospital was not accepting interns. So we're really happy to have a large number of students going out this summer. Sophomores, juniors, we even had some juniors who are now doing internship on their own because they just couldn't wait. So the Academy of Health Science is offering a lot of great experiences for our students. We had guest speakers. Just a few weeks ago, we had a gentleman from Oxford. Well, he zoomed with us at ten PM angular time and spoke to them about bioengineering in my biotechnology class. They really liked his accents. Then he talked about the telly. So it was a, it was a good experience. We've had a number of of guest speakers in that regard. We had a wonderful Leaders of Tomorrow conference this year where we had community members come out and meet with our sophomores. Our sophomores will be going to Fresno State in a couple of weeks to do a tour of the physical therapy lab and the nursing department. They get to go to the cadaver lab. That's a big thrill for some of them. Some of them don't want to go in, but that's okay. We've also taken trips with our freshmen, our juniors, and we hope to continue doing that more next year. Everything's kind of been pushed toward the end of the year because the way things worked out. We've also had the opportunity to invite community members in with our advisory board. And we have student projects coming up the next few weeks. Tomorrow, we're doing Stop the Bleed training at Mount Whitney. If anyone's interested in coming and seeing that, how to pack a wound, apply a tourniquet. Almost every one of our juniors got CPR training this year. And let's see, I want to see if I'm forgetting anything. I do have notes. We have a growing enrollment, you know, that we lost some students due to, I shouldn't say it that way. We, our enrollment declined over COVID. And now we're starting to see more students interested in health science and joining us. We have a very active OSA club, which is future health professionals. And our advisory has been very supportive in that. Student volunteers have been going out within the community. They're chomping at the bit to get out there and do stuff. And as we all know, you know, they can be accountable to their parents, accountable to their teachers, but when they're accountable to other adults, it really makes an impression on them. Absolutely. Also, I guess I would be remiss not to mention that we are still in the process of applying for gold certification. The target keeps changing, but we're keeping an eye on that. And we're hoping that we'll be able to achieve that in 2023, well, next school year, I should say. Other than that, if you had any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I think we got two and a half minutes.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Can you touch on what that gold certification entails?
Yes, through linked learning, they recognize academies that are superior and have achieved what they consider to be the ideal for what project-based learning is all about. And we've been working on this for the last year and a half. We got derailed by COVID. But we still have all of our plans in place. And we're hoping to have another, another initial meeting with our advisors then. And hopefully, they'll be able to come out and do a site visit in the fall. Yeah.
No more questions? Well, thank you.
I wanted to ask, you said, what's happening in Mount Whitney tomorrow?
It's a Stop the Bleed training for traumatic bleeding injuries. Yeah.
When is that?
That's about eleven thirty to two fifteen. Come on by.
That's awesome.
Yeah, we've got four or five folks from Korea Delta coming to train them.
Cool. I want to come see the kids learn. Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
When is your, are there your project presentations?
We have projects on May eighteenth for our freshmen. And that's going to be, I believe, it starts at five thirty. They're going to be presenting their career brochures, and they're going to be presenting to health professionals in the occupations that they're researching. And then on the nineteenth, during the school day, my sophomores will be presenting their anatomy physiology projects, which have to do with condition of the human body, human body systems. They're going to be building models, demonstrations. You're welcome to come and check those out as well. I know they'd love to have more adults in the room.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I have one more question. When your students graduate, do they have any certification or anything like that?
Thanks for mentioning that. Yeah, besides CPR, Stop the Bleed, we do Career Safe certifications in employability skills, interview skills, cyber safety and so on. But this year, we also added the OSHA training for our seniors for healthcare. And we're always looking for more certifications too. And a number of our students, needless to say, graduate from the CNA and the MA program as well, which their graduation's coming up, I believe, next week, sixteenth?
Wednesday.
Yeah, I think that's the sixteenth. Yeah, at Ridgeview. Yeah, so.
Nice. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Lots of great things happening with our academies at Mount Whitney High School. This next little piece is another kind of a kudo between Mount Whitney and Eldie Amonte. They've done a couple of things together this year with their show they put on. But this one is a, is a feel-good item. Eldie Amonte and Mount Whitney High School baseball players teamed up with the Go for the Goal Foundation to raise funds and awareness for kids battling cancer in our community. Together, the two programs raised more than thirty-two hundred dollars to support families who have a child battling cancer. The teams wore yellow laces on their cleats during their game to support the awareness of children battling cancer. So the way this kind of started, the Eldie Amonte baseball team launched the campaign, campaign in honor of Jacob So the way this kind of started, the El Diamante baseball team launched the campaign, campaign in honor of Jacob Fagundes, who is battling lymphoma. Joey Fagundes, Jacob's older brother, is a senior on the El Diamante High School baseball team. Joey donated bone marrow back in November 2021 to his brother. So some great things happening there and, and you know, nice to have kids come together to support our kids in need. So thank you to those families and the teams. Now I want to bring up, not last but not least, I'm asking, we want us to do a spotlight on Redwood FBLA. And I have Jacob Avila, who's their advisor and a teacher at Redwood. Along with Jacob, we have Danya Akavon? I got it? Okay.
All right. I had to do notes here because I didn't want to be too off-base here, guys. So good evening, Board President Guerrero. Thank you for your constant support. We always email back and forth, so it's great. Superintendent Cardozo, have a great relationship with you and the board as well. Jacob Avila, as you mentioned, Redwood FBLA advisor for 15 years now. I'm also the central section director, so I get to work with kids not only at Redwood, but our district has three, three teams that do FBLA. And we have 30 chapters, I can say, the most in the state, 30 chapters in our Central Valley. So it's a fun organization to be a part of. So I'm going to give some highlights. And then I'm going to let Danya tell you her personal experience so you believe that what I'm saying is actually true. Okay, you're going to vouch for me, right? Okay. All right. So FBLA is similar to FFA or OSHA, as was mentioned earlier. It's a career technical student organization. We had the honor of going to our first in-person conference. I'm sure you've heard first in-person thing many times, but this is our first in-person since 2019. So you'll see on the board, we placed 17 times in Ontario, California. There was about 2,000, or about 1,800 kids and advisors from all over California. So to get top 10 in our state is very tough. We are the best competitive state in terms of how we perform at nationals. So to get through to California, to get 14, we actually had two kids qualify after I sent this to Doug. So 14 kids go into nationals in Chicago this summer. So it's been a great organization for our students. I'm going to let Danya talk and then I'm going to say my thank yous. So Danya's going to share her experience. I'm going to brag about her. She's our current VP of Activities, which is number two. About, we have 134 members, so it's a big organization at Redwood. And she is going to be our, we'll give her a round of applause as she comes up, our FBLA incoming president next year. So.
Thank you so much. So FBLA is the first environment that I've come across that has truly immersed and engaged students in actual career options. Not only that, but we get a head start in these, you know, respective careers because we actually study the content. And this organization has allowed us to take the first critical steps in building a stable and long-lasting professional career because that is one of the focuses at FBLA. I, along with many of my fellow members, have also acquired a plethora of skills beyond just knowledge, but rather how to function, speak, and behave in real life so that we may connect and collaborate and succeed within our society. As for state, personally, it was not only an absolute success, but it was incredibly fun. I, along with my fellow chapter members, have created connections with people all over California. I mean, just last weekend, I actually visited someone down in Southern California who I met at state. And now I'll be joining his Committee of Young Leaders, which is, it's a, it's a group of kids who, it's one of the only, okay, it's, it's a political action group. It's one of the only student-run political action groups in the country. So what I'm trying to say is that this organization has presented us with so many opportunities, not only just through, you know, learning, just actual career content, but also, I mean, there's public speaking, like, we just learned so many skills that enable us to function as respectable adults in society. So, and not only that, but being able to be in person, like how we were in state. It has granted us the ability to create connections with people, you know, all over California, which I'd say is, you know, another skill that you need as an adult. So, yeah. I am so incredibly thankful to be part of this organization and just, I'm so blessed and I'm so grateful that you are our advisor and. Um, so yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. So last thing I'll say about FBLA real quick is our national conference will be held in Chicago this summer. So I don't know why they do it in the summer, but they do. They obviously like to overlap it and make it really hard for teachers because it's in two fiscal years, June 28th through July 2nd. So paying for it's really fun. There are going to be 10,000 members, so our students are going to compete with people in groups and then they qualify to finals. So we're really excited. I'm really excited to achieve a lifelong dream of going to Wrigley Field also, so as a fun part of it. I want to thank the board. Like, as I mentioned, President Guerrero, you've been kind to us over the years and board members as well. Superintendent Cardozo, it's been great working with you. Sad to see you go. And I want to give two other shout-outs to Director of Cauldron Core Readiness, Vicky Leoni. She's been great. We were able to pay for some of our state section conference, state and nationals with our gracious CTE funds. And our principal, Matt Shin, has always been supportive as well. So thank you, guys, and have a great rest of your evening.
Thank you.
All right, any questions?
Any questions or comments from the board?
Well, I just, I did have a question, Jacob. Sorry, didn't get to leave yet. Um, so you, we don't have FBLA at all high schools, is what it sounded like you were saying.
I guess I misspoke. We technically have them at all four.
Okay.
Active at three.
Okay, got it.
The fourth one is coming along.
Okay, okay.
So next year, I hope to have a video program involved over at another school. I won't say who.
Got it. Okay, this is.
She wants to be involved. Slick Rock takes a ton of time, so I'm trying to let her know it's okay to do one thing instead of. It's hard because Redwood, when I took over, was, and Walter's been around Joy as well, like, when I took over, it was like 100 kids. So it was like, everyone in the district's like, I don't want to do that. So I'm telling them it's okay to have 10, 5, 23, whatever you want to do. So hopefully next year, we get all four on board. This year, actually, we had all three that participated, placed at the section level and qualified for the state conference. So it was a really cool to see as the director, because I want more schools involved, obviously. And as a district employee, I like to see my friends do fun stuff. And they're like, they come to me like, yeah, I should have done this 10 years ago. So.
Yeah, I mean, I look at the things that, that you do and it just, they look like they could be classes, like they're just.
Oh, yeah. Like, I think we talked, you emailed me after. We have a student, I'll give him a shout out. I'm sure he's watching. Adam Hacker. His name is literally Hacker and he did a mobile app development event. So he literally is like hacking his own program.
I can't believe that.
He's actually going to be one of our VUQs next year as well. So it's been great. We, if you look at that list from the, that you see in the Doug's presentation, you'll see kids that are freshmen qualified for nationals and four-year members that went to state as a freshman. This is their first in-person and now they're going to nationals this summer. So really cool to see it full circle, as other people mentioned as well, like we're back in person. Yay. It's fun, but you know, as it goes, I'm very appreciative for CTE and our district being so strong because it helps us get there with funding and with your guys' support as well.
Um, Jacob, I just want to say thank you. And he had big shoes to fill, Doris.
They're really small, but.
Yes.
Figurative.
I mean, her name is on the building and he has run with that program and even made it better. So thank you.
I appreciate that. I wouldn't say it's better. It's different, more fun. She was very serious. But I, I go to nationals with Redwood and everyone, oh, your Doris is, oh, yeah, you're from Doris's school. So it's still, we're 15 years out and it's still a thing. So I'm happy to have the Redwood name on because it makes us look good. All right, thank you, guys.
Maybe you'll get a building too. Okay, we're going to move on to our agenda. Our next item on the agenda is general public comment. General public comment on any school-related topic may be heard at this time. The board asked the public comment on an item be listed on tonight's agenda be addressed at the time the item comes up for discussion by the board. Pursuant to board policy, the board may limit individual comments to no more than three minutes and individual topics to 20 minutes. It is recommended you begin your comments by stating your name. Crystal Reynolds?
Good evening, Board and interim Superintendent Cardozo. My name is Crystal Reynolds and I am the mother of three with two children in the district. I just first wanted to start off by giving an update of some of the questions I've asked the last couple of meetings and just let you know where we are with that. I had a wonderful conversation with Mr. Thompson a couple of weeks ago. He answered a lot of our questions on the COVID testing and billing. So I am very appreciative of that and I was able to share that with the constituents, that question. So thank you for that. As far as the phone calls for Mr. Cardozo, it appears at this time that, again, phone calls are still not being allowed because we're back to in-person meetings. But I do have a question because I read this on the front of the agenda today that it says, teleconferencing may be used for all purposes in connection with any meeting. A little bit about that talks about allowing meaningful opportunity for parents or community to address the board on agenda or non-agenda items. So my question is, can public comment be made during teleconference? Is that a possibility? Again, for me, I'm just trying to promote as much as we can to allow people that want to be here but can't be here for scheduling childcare needs. Is there any other way to get them or allow them access to participate? So whether it's, again, phone call, teleconferencing, is that a possibility? The last thing was on task force. My understanding is there is no task force right now, that something's happening between district office and schools. You know, I think a lot of the parents had the impression that they were going to be able to be involved and give input and be part of that process. So if there is going to be anything, I'm sure that a lot of your constituents would like to know on that. The last thing I did want to talk about is a concern that I have, and it's been a growing concern as a parent for the last couple of years, although it's kind of manifest, or manifested a little bit more in the last couple of months. So one of my concerns as a parent is I'm noticing a lot of the forms that go home with my kids regarding anything where, where parents have to sign or give consent. I'm noticing that there's no longer any opt-outs. All of it is pretty much, this is what we're doing. We need you to sign. One of them in particular was just this morning, my daughter handed me something that she was enrolled in summer school without any knowledge to my husband or I, we, we didn't even know they put her on an off-site place for summer school. And I am working with the school right now. They're trying to figure out what happened with that. But even the teacher had no idea. So it's just things like that. And the way the letter is worded, it specifically, specifically says, welcome, you're enrolled, you're going to this school. And there's nothing on the form that says, I refuse or I decline to participate. It does mention that if you don't show up, you'll be dropped. But again, on the forms for parents, there should always be a chance to choose or an alternative or a declination. And that's not being on a lot of the forms. Another one, for example, will be a couple of months ago, my daughter did go to a field trip. And there was a basically emergency, I consent to give full medical treatment, including that of surgery to the staff that's on site, and there was no opt-out. So again, please check these forms. A lot of parents, you know, again, they want a choice when it comes to their kids. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and just so the public knows, we, during a public comment, we, our policy is we don't respond to public comment, but I'll ask the interim superintendent to work on your questions. Okay, our next item on the agenda is consent agenda. Would any board member like to pull an item?
Yes, I would like to pull enclosure number four, 7.1, number one.
Okay. Any other board member?
I will motion to approve the remaining of the agenda.
We have.
Consent agenda.
There's a motion by Megan, Casebeers Saleno. Is there a second?
All second.
Second by board member Gabby. All in favor?
Board member Casebeers Saleno?
Yes.
Board member Gabby?
Yes.
I vote yes. President Guerrero?
Yes.
Board member Vegas?
Yes.
Board member Blair?
Yes.
Motion carries five, six, one absent.
Okay, so on enclosure number four, I believe you needed to abstain?
Yes, as stated before, I have a sibling who does, who is employed by someone who does business by the district. And therefore, I abstain anytime that employer appears on our warrant list or any related items. So I will be abstaining from approving the warrant list.
Okay, can I have a board member make a motion for, for enclosure number?
I move.
Motion by Ms. Gemonian. Is there a second?
All second.
Second by Ms. Gabby. All in favor?
Board member Gabby? Yes. I vote yes. President Guerrero?
Yes.
Board member Vegas?
Abstain.
Board member Blair?
Yes.
Board member Casebeers Saleno?
Yes.
Motion carries five, one absent, one abstention.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is local control accountability plan. It's an update. Enclosure number 23, Jim Sullivan will be presenting Administrator of Family and Community Services.
Good evening, Board President Guerrero. Acting Superintendent Mr. Cardozo, my name is Jim Sullivan. I am the Administrator of Family and Community Services. I'm here to share with you our plan as we move forward on our local control accountability plan, is what it's called. And it's really addressing board goal number five. I want to remind you that this, in our current plan, we, for salaries, this includes some step and column raises is in there. So for next year, currently, we will have over 78% of our supplemental concentration funds will be allocated towards salaries. And you can see in federal funds, Title I, II, III, and IV, it'll be about 40%. So we're going to be talking about next year's plan, 2022. And we have to remember, this is a three-year plan. So we're in the second year of our three-year plan. I want to remind you that we're going to be adding all of these different funds, including some of our grants that we received, as well as some state grants. I went out and I've spoke to students, our union representatives, principals, parents, and administrators. And the first one is, is this is our goals, is in black, your board goal. And then you can see as we're going to, some of our goals need to be changed to make them more, that we can measure them. So for example, goal number one will read, the USD will increase academic achievement for all students, including the following student groups. And in LCAP, the academic achievement is measured by either the CASP ELA or math, or also A through G graduation. And board goal number three, the USD will increase student engagement for all students, including the following student groups. And the following groups, and the student groups are really student groups that are scoring red or two colors below are all students. And in goal three, for student engagement, the state recognizes its suspension rate, attendance rate, as well as graduation rate is in student engagement. So to support goal one, these are all the salaries that are, will be in goal one. The ones in red are the ones, if you remember, are being currently funded through one-time funds. And you can see that some of those are in question marks. And the reason those are question marks is, is so for VAPA, we received, they had a great team that worked together to develop a proposal on, to support them in transportation. So we received that proposal on Friday, which was after we created the board packet. And also, we need to vet this and see how much it actually costs because they gave us just mileage. So now we're, I sent it on to see how much it's actually going to cost us. TK supported well, and it's a question mark because again, it's based on what is needed when we get there. Well, two, in three, you can see what we need, what we're adding, or what is funded through one-time funds. Go four, go four, if you remember, that currently is funding our teacher induction program. The teacher induction program is going to be moved to educator effectiveness grant. And we'll be using this for professional development for classified and certificated teachers. So I went out and actually I met with our district advisory committee and our district English learner advisory committee. You have attached in the BAI, you could see all of what was actually proposed. So what kind of the patterns we saw with them was communication was a big one, that they would like to see more clear communication. One of them is, is our website is, for them, is very difficult to access and to maneuver through. Another one was electives, class electives. Parents of English learners, they recognize that their students need additional classes and for ELD, but they also recognizes that means the students don't receive, they don't get another elective. And so they're wondering, what could we do differently? Because in their mind, it's not fair for them to be in an English ELD class and then not getting an elective. So that's part of it is, is looking at our, our process of how we put kids in those classes as well as our schedules. Another one is offering for special. Another one is offering for special ed has the same, I'm concerned, those parents have same concern as well. And you can see the other supports they'd like to see as well. So principal input. You can see the big categories for them. A lot of it was Fanta's and panel for elementary professional learning communities for our secondary. I'm maintaining staff that they currently have based on using those one-time funds. Autonomy while I'm looking at some of our deciding curriculum, the supplemental materials, as well as the number of FTEs when it comes to our charter schools. They also would like sub-released with instructional rounds and then assessments. Getting an assessment for EL progress and we need to have an assessment. We can monitor our students that are learning English so that we can see that their English is improving, not just the reading and math scores. The best part of this whole time was is I got to go out to sites. I got to meet with students and that was a lot of fun. I met with avid classes, skills class for special ed. I met with honors classes and I met with our student body classes. So a lot of theirs was extras for their, I asked them, what would they like to see in elementary school when they were in elementary school or middle school? And it was across the board was extracurricular activities when it comes to sports, plays choir. They also wanted to in middle school. They struggle with the grading system because it doesn't match high school. So they, it doesn't, they need a better understanding when they go to high school. They said there was kind of, it was kind of a culture shock for them. And so they wanted to have a better understanding of why we don't use grades in middle school. Also was is to help connect them to careers earlier so that they can have a, I'm going to use my words, a purpose in high school. Instead of just going to high schools, they have a, they understand why they're in high school. So for high school, again, it was flexible schedules. They wanted night classes. So maybe instead of taking one class during the day, they take it at night. They also talked about additional again, scheduling. It was interesting. Some kids didn't like block scheduling. Other kids wanted block scheduling. The commonality is is they'd like to have more opportunities for more classes. That was a big one. Tutoring, they would ask for tutoring and I wanted, and I kept asking, so what does that mean? Because I said, you know, as as an adult, when I hear tutoring, sometimes that means is you're going to give up an elective. And that's not what they want. They want tutoring as in, I need help in this math because I'm going to be taking a math class. So I need to be able to go in after school, during lunch, before school to learn how to do some math before I take the test. That is different than our AAA tutoring that we have after school that is for homework. So homework is different than tutoring for a test. So that's they'd like to have some tutoring just specifically as they take, you know, when they're getting ready to take a test. I asked them, what would they want their parents to know? One of them was is preparing for the FAFSA. As you know, if any of you have ever filled out that FAFSA, I know I have and I don't like it. It is very difficult. And so they would like help, they would like support for their parents on that. Also is is that grades aren't the most important thing. And it was interesting is is because, you know, parents put pressure on their students and they need to realize that sometimes it's okay to get an B or a C, especially if I'm working really hard. The other one was is importance of attendance. They don't understand, sometimes parents don't understand how difficult it is if my, if I miss a day or miss a period or two. Because I need to take care of my little brother or sister. Then I also worked with our CSEA. You can see their questions. The commonality for them was is increased part-time to full-time. And we've known that they would like to see that happen. The other one was is bring back the fall classified conference. Years ago, I think before COVID, we would have a conference for our classified employees and they'd like to see that back. But VUTA, you can see their questions. We've answered those questions. I think most of them or all of them, and we responded with Greg. Their commonality is that they want to funnel all the money to items that best support our students. And then they also had a question about the music team. So currently we fund all of the elementary music team in our LCAP. And their questioning, their concern is, is if LCAP goes away, does the music team go away? Well, it's, they would have to change law in order for our supplemental concentration funds to go away. Because it's in law that that's how we, that's how schools are funded now. So that kind of helps address that. Our next steps is we're going to meet with principals tomorrow. And they're going to actually review, because if you remember, we talked about how we met with every principal one-on-one. They're going to see how as cabinet, we reviewed the information and what we're going to, what our plans are going to be, but we're also going to ask them some clarifying questions. Like they would like professional development, but in our eyes, maybe it's not professional development on Fanta's and panel. Maybe it's in our eyes, when do they want it? What specifically in Fanta's panel do they want for professional development? So we're trying to get more information from them so we can plan our professional development for next year and our support. Another one is is departments and are going to review what principals have said as well as I'm going to give them all of these other suggestions. High school principals will be receiving what their students recommended or question. One of them was, and I failed to mention was is bathrooms. So that they're going to see all of the recommendations that parents have asked for, for for support in elementary, middle and high school. So that way the principals can see what parents are asking for. Our next steps or timeline is next board meeting, I will share with you our recommendations of adding or changing in our LCAP. We will then put that out in our public because we'll make it a rough draft. So that in June, I will come to you with our first read and then at the end of June for our approval.
Any questions? We do have public comment, so I will bring up our public comment person, Mr. Messia.
Good evening, board. There's a lot of different components in the LCAP and the one that I'm here to speak on tonight is the VAPA transportation. I think that's an important piece that needs to be included. I want to be an advocate for that and I would like you to to encourage staff to include that and include the funding for it. Right now, it's, it's, it's back on the, on the backs of the parents to supply some of the, to supply the transportation. And that eliminates a lot of staff or a lot of students from attending these events. But I think it's an important part for the community and for those students to get that part of their, of their schooling. So please include it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. About that. Okay, so any board member have any questions or comments?
Yeah.
Mr. Vegas, go ahead.
Sure. Well, thank you for highlighting Mr. CSI. Also, I want to strongly urge us to support VAPA. I know I've had these conversations with Superintendent Cardoza. And I've been able to sit on a few VAPA advisory committee meetings and I know just how essential and how much of a game changer that would be for so many programs and for so many students. Thank you for highlighting all the stakeholder feedback. I wanted to follow up around the AAA tutoring program. I know that was initially started through Zoom and you know, was helping a lot of students. Are we continuing to only do Zoom for that? Is there any talk about transitioning that AAA program to offer in-person after-school tutoring as well? And then as a follow-up on the music teachers funded through LCAP funds, is it only those elementary teachers that are funded through supplemental or any middle or high school? Either band directors or additional sort of, you know, support staff, coaches, et cetera, funded through LCAP supplemental funds and are those at risk in the future in any sort of way? Thank you.
So music, music teachers are either funded elementary, music is funded through our supplemental concentration funds. It also includes some of the band and orchestra in the middle school because for the periods they go down to elementary to teach the elementary students, we fund those through our supplemental concentration funds. The rest of music is funded through general fund. So neither one of those funds is really at risk of being eliminated. By law, they have to exist. Your question on the AAA, so currently our plan is to keep it through Zoom because it was started really is to support students for homework, which is kind of different than tutoring. Later on, you'll see that we've received funds for ELOP where we might be able to provide some tutoring. In that instance, for it's focused on elementary. So we need to really think about how we can do provide tutoring for high schools.
Ms. Caseper Saleno?
Yeah, I had a quick question. When the students indicate things like, I think the high school student said, like more mental health support. What does that mean to them? Does that mean like a counselor? Does that mean therapy? Does that, I'm just curious if they?
It means a whole bunch of things.
Okay.
So it means many of them know that they're social workers and they know that the social workers aren't there every day. So that's one of them. Other ones is it could be support on counseling services. It could be different things like that. So it means also helping parents, a big one was is helping parents understand what kids experience when it comes to the difference between when they were in school and when we were in school. So that's kind of, it's kind of a whole bunch of stuff in there for their mental health.
Okay, I was just curious. Thanks.
I have one more follow-up. I know some students mentioned, you know, talk of like more flexible schedules and even night classes. And I know you said there was kind of conflicting data on some students who wanted block schedule versus others who didn't. Do we have any data or any survey that looks at, you know, if we were to offer some sort of night class or alternative schedule, you know, how many students would take advantage of this opportunity, et cetera? Because I'm very much interested in that conversation.
So if I may talk on that a little bit, our first thing is we're trying to work together on what schedules are possible. So that way we're not asking the question before we can deliver. So that's what we actually are doing. Mr. Hamilton right now is leading a group of administrators that master schedule quite a bit along with teachers that have a lot of interest in that. So we are, have a committee that's working through that as we speak. Because our goal would be that we have, we look at that before we go out to all of our students and say, hey, do you want this? Do you want this? And then we can't produce that or as other ramifications, we're trying to look at the ramifications to have an understanding of the positives and the negatives. That will tell you every master schedule has some real positives, but they also have some real negatives. So we're, we're trying to do our due diligence first before we go out because the last thing we want to do is sell a bill of sales to our students or get that feedback and then then not be able to produce it. So that's, that's what we're working on right now. There's been some great work. VUTA has been with us on this project and working through this because at the end of the day, it is really about how can we best serve our students, give them the most opportunities possible. But also, as many of you know, when you change a master schedule, it has big ramifications for a lot of different people in a lot of different ways. So that's that, we're trying to be intentional with that before we, we push it out to our students or give that, get that opinion.
Could I?
Scimonian?
Yeah, I'm going to follow up on schedules. And when I looked at the, the data you provided with the surveys, kids want more classes and we also need to be implementing that third year of math. But I have some concerns unless we go to a seven-period schedule. We're going to cut out a lot of elective programs and they want elective programs. So I'm hoping, Mr. Thompson, that that discussion is part of it, the seven, you know, whether it's seven-period day, like the, the, you know, like the middle school or it's a modified block, we really need to have seven periods. And we need to, and we need to implement that third year of math.
We have, we have to remember that just because we can't eliminate electives because most of those electives are part of the A through G. If they're not part of A through G, they're also part of CTE courses. So I know that they're looking at that closely because it's, it's a big picture. It's not just.
It is. Well, it concerns me with VAPA too, because you know, some kids want jazz band and they want marching band and they want choir. And when we require that third year math, that's going to really cut into the VAPA electives. And I want to make sure that kids have those opportunities if they want them. The other thing is, and maybe this is a question for Mrs. Somavia, we need to get those OCIs on campus. Is that being difficult to hire those teachers? And I want to make sure that doesn't count against the high schools FTEs?
They're, I'll answer part of it. They're part of the LCAP, so they will not be part of their FT. It's in addition.
Mr. Sullivan is correct. It's an additional line on their FTE sheet, so it doesn't count for their enrollment FTE allotment. And we are advertising them and we have begun to hire for them. They are hard to fill.
Yeah.
Because not every teacher wants to have that assignment.
Right. So. I take that assignment in a heartbeat.
Continuing to recruit there.
Okay. And then my other question is flexible scheduling. Because tutoring and remediation is better in the school day than it is after school, before school, lunches. I'm hoping that we can get creative and flexible, that that is part of the school day.
So, and I know this isn't what Mr. Thompson's. Well, let me, so one of the things the students recommended was is that for middle school, you know how they have the RTI time?
Yes.
That's what they want for high school.
Yes.
So I, I can kind of speak to all the kind of concerns over schedules right now. We have met, we've had two meetings so far, both of them very productive. We have opened up and I shared with you our common goals. And one of those keeps coming back to course access for all students. Because one of the challenges that we've seen is our students on IEPs, our students in the ELD population have trouble accessing a variety of our courses. And so we've recognized that and it is driving us to look at additional periods. But also one of those guiding principles is to have some type of opportunity of flexible scheduling within the instructional day. And those are some commitments that we've made within that group of both VUTA and site administration to move forward. And so I am hopeful that we'll bring something forward late fall.
Ms. Gaby?
And last thing, just to continue to beat up the scheduling topic is first, I appreciate that there's conversations. But you know, it's, when we ask that question, what can we do? We can do anything. We are the district. And so I would just like to make sure that, you know, when we're having these conversations, we're putting students first. And like really thinking what's best for them. They're willing to come one night a week. They're willing to do these things. And if we center on students and what's best for them, we can do anything. We, we are the district. So you know, and I know we are associations, we have to work with them, but they also are in it for what's best for kids. And so I appreciate that we're having conversations and just want to make sure we're not limiting those.
Um, we did talk earlier today. I just wanted to reiterate. So the question mark behind VAPA transportation isn't, we're wondering if we're going to get this transportation, but it's just the amount, like you said, that they had to decide how many events they were going to go to. The, the committee had to come up with that together. I just want to make sure we're all understanding and that we're going to pay for their transportation as like a base unless they decide last minute on a whim to go somewhere extra. Is that the thing?
Yes. So their, their proposal has a list of different competitions, if you will, and the mileage. So we're going to, our process will be is to figure out how much each one of those costs and see how much it would cost as a whole package. And then we will go from there to determine how much we can actually allocate or if we can allocate all of it. So that's, that'll be our process.
Thank you.
Then Mr. Sullivan, I just want to say thank you and thank you that you went to all those stakeholders. That's amazing.
It was fun. That's the best part.
Okay.
Thank you.
So in another week, we're going to have the May revise coming up. And when that comes out, there's discussion about an increase to the base, an increase to concentration. But also in that budget, there's also discussion on increase or home-to-school transportation in terms of where there's going to be money for it, that the state's going to be, be given to the school districts.
Yes.
At least that's what I'm hearing. So if that's the case, there should be, if we, if there's should be the ability to redirect the funds that we're using there into these other topics on transportation that we're talking about. You get where I'm coming from?
So you're asking is, is so if in the May revise, they come up with extra funds for transportation, we should be able to take that transportation funds and, and do other things. Yes.
Other things in transportation that we have needs, needs for because.
Oh, I see. Yes.
I'm hearing VAPA needs transportation, but I also, I also know that parents scatter all over the place to, to help their kids get to either performances or athletic events, whatever. But what I'm saying is that we should have an opportunity, we should have an opportunity, opportunity to examine where the gaps are at so that we can fill those gaps. Because if the state's giving us some funds for transportation out there, home-to-school, then we should be able then we should be able to redirect funds to where we do have needs. That's what I'm getting at.
Yes. And I want to make, I want, I want us to hopefully all understand is though, is we're already, we're going to provide funds for transportation, whether the governor puts adds money for transportation or not. So if.
So what you're saying is that we, we're making a commitment to provide.
Yes.
Okay, I get it. All right.
Yeah, just to chime in. So we started this conversation nearly a year ago and pulled together a committee and got all the voices in the room. And we've really been focusing on, we realized we want to really increase support for our VAPA. So there's a lot of work that's been happening. Transportation is one of those things that is Jim and Mark and everyone, they've been working on that as well. So, you know, we don't want to announce anything. This is exactly what we're doing. We're doing our homework. We're making sure we get it right. But we made a commitment to really increase the support for VAPA well before we knew whether there's going to be extra money. So there is a commitment there. So thank you all.
So, Mr. Guerrero, will it help if I, at our next meeting, lay out what they're asking for and what we will be funding?
Yes.
Okay.
That's, that will help, but also Nathan will be here also. So he'll give us the other side of that in terms of what's coming and the other.
Yes, right. Because we have to do a revise in our LCAP because of the May revise. So we'll be able to do both together.
Yeah. And, and I'm looking forward to what you all are going to bring to us in the fall in terms of schedules and, and everything else because we, we are, we do want to change our, we want to have more opportunities. We want to go into a three year, you know, a math requirement. You know, we heard some of that today with, with, with people from UC, UC Merced, you know, and, and so, so what I'm talking about is A two G and all that. Okay. So I'm looking for your, forward to your presentations in the next meeting.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We're going to move on. And the next item on the agenda is adoption of instructor, instructional materials, high school science. This is the first read enclosure number 24.
Good evening, President Guerrero, interim superintendent Cardoza, members of the board and community. I'm Breann Phillips, Director of STEM. Tonight I'm here to complete a first read of our secondary science adoption. I'm joined tonight with Lori Dirksen, our STEM coordinator, Scott Dirksen, our STEM TOSA, teacher on special assignment. Not in attendance tonight, we also have Chelsea Del Rio, our STEM TOSA as well. I just want to take a moment to thank each member of the, of this team. They are truly who have brought us here tonight to this first read. Behind any science adoption or behind any adoption, there are hours and hours of work put in. And this team has been amazing and the support of getting us here. With our adoption, any of the work that we've done, we've held our VUSD mission at our core in making our decisions and moving forward. As with in all of our meetings and presentations that we do with you guys, we review our why for our department. We are committed to a continuous improvement process to lead the district in a high quality aligned curricular, I'm sorry, instructional system to ensure all sites are equipped to provide achievement, access and equity for all students. Within our collective commitments tonight, I will be communicating and collaborating effectively. So I wanted to just take a brief moment to review kind of our VUSD journey with our next generation's science standards. So in September of 2013, the CDE adopted the next generation's science standards for our California public school system. In 2016, our science frameworks were then adopted. VUSD in 2019, we adopted STEM scopes by accelerated reader to, it was an 18 month purchase to support our teachers with instruction that was standards based. And then we extended that contract at the beginning of this year in 2021, and that extension was for a full 24 months. As we went into our adoption process, the process we followed was the NGSS time process. So in this, there are very distinct steps that moved us along. And what we'll be going through tonight is each of these steps and kind of telling the story of where we began and where we're at now. As you can see, and you have seen this multiple times throughout our journey, we've updated you through board line as well as in some board presentations as to where we are at in our textbook adoption. So we did begin in, at an October of 2021 and went through each of our steps. Pre-screening our publishers, paper screening with our teachers, going through pilots and then having a consensus meeting at the end. So in our pre-screening process at the beginning, when our publishers came to present to us, what we looked for in these publishers was do they support a four course model? Our district is a four course model district. Are there intentional ELD supports within the curriculum? Is it a 3D learning? Is there phenomenon? Is it caste aligned? Is there schoology integration as well as the performance of their digital platform? So all of our programs that came to us, from there, we narrowed it down to two that met our criteria, McGraw Hill and HMH. At this point, we brought in all of our teachers, our lead teachers within our content areas from each school site. And they were our adoption team and you will see the teachers' names up shortly further down in the slide deck. But we brought them in together to discuss how we would be doing a paper screen. We wanted to make our textbooks accessible to every single science teacher in our district. So each of our publishers sent their biology, chemistry and earth science texts out to each of our school sites. Every teacher, science teacher on the school site had access to engage with that with each program. We asked and every teacher also had the ability to provide feedback. This paper screening feedback form was very time intensive. So there are five categories that are, that our teachers provided feedback on. And then they provided feedback on each of the individual bulleted items there. They received a rubric for every single item in order to determine on a scale of one to five, how that they would base, they would judge the program. After our paper screening process, we came back together and we came to the conclusion that we should pilot both programs. There was not one program that was significantly outshining the other programs. So the teachers, their desire was to engage in both programs and pilot both. So we had teachers from multiple school sites pilot. Again, we offered piloting to any teacher that wanted to pilot. Our minimum requirement was one teacher per school site, per content area. However, there were some school sites that wanted their entire PLC to pilot and they were allowed to pilot. However, when they provided feedback, their feedback was averaged as their school site. So it wasn't that one school site had more say than another, their feedback was averaged into one score for their, for their school site. So our pilots were three weeks each. Our teachers had to engage in lessons, informative assessment and a lab. All of our students had the digital access to the platforms. Our teachers had digital access to the platform as well as they had, the teachers had the hard copies. We asked for feedback within, from our teachers in this. It is the same five categories that they provided feedback on, but now that they have engaged with the program, they were able to better judge what, how they would like to score each of those pieces. We also asked that our students provide feedback. We received over 800 student feedback surveys from every single school site. From every student that engaged with it, they, they really did provide that feedback and they ranked the categories you see here, engagement, ease of use, the online platform, rigor, hands-on experience and access to vocabulary. After our pilots, which each of our teachers that were on our pilot team, they had to attend a training meeting and they went out and worked with it. Mr. Dirksen went out and worked with teachers checking in on them. Mrs. Del Rio went out for technical support whenever there was need on those pieces too. So when it came down to it, we came, we came back after our second pilot and we brought all of our data forward. And so what you can see here is the overall scores for each content area on the left for our two programs. You see in the lighter color, our teacher response scores averaged as well as our student response scores averaged. And again, that was by school site, not by individual teacher. And you can also see overall when you score our programs overall. Additionally, we wanted to get feedback from our teachers in terms of between the two programs, are there issues moving forward with one or the other? From here, they gave us feedback on, yes, there's a few issues, major issues. And the numbers there represent how many teachers said, yes, there are major issues with this program. Or no, there's not any issues. Let's go forward with this program. So that's what the gray, ombre graphic, or I'm sorry, chart displays there. Um, from this point, we also did a pamphlet where teachers were allowed to give us that one last feedback opportunity where they let us know, hey, this is what needs to be addressed moving forward. Or these are the things we want to champion within this program. So we do have some teacher comments here from the HMH program. So from our HMH program, students were engaged and active participants in the lesson. Content was more accessible and active activities correlated with the content and assessments given. Another con, one was by conducting the lab in parts over multiple days, it truly felt like anchoring phenomenon. So there were lots of varying responses from our teachers on our HMH program. And then our students on the HMH program. I think as you read through this, you see one word that shows up repeatedly is the word ease. So what our students are looking for is an easy way to navigate an easy digital platform to use and something that they can understand. So our students now, because we are moving to a digital platform for all content areas, having something and where they don't have to click multiple, multiple places to get to where they need. It is a key component for them. Additionally, some of them were very engaged. Our second one, ease of use kept me interested and kept me engaged with the lesson and activities. And that was Joey Castillo, Earth Science from Mount Whitney High School. So our students definitely, when we went out and had conversations around our students around the programs, they voiced a preference for the digital platform with HMH. So our recommendation moving forward from our committee is to go forward with HMH. What this will do is it will service over the course of eight years, a licensing of 4,500 biology, it's really licenses, 2,000 chemistry and 1,900 physical earth. What that does is that services growth over time. It also supports because our licenses are a year license and summer school starts a Tuesday. After a Monday, those licenses aren't up, so we have to have additional licenses in the bank as well as any extended learning opportunities. If we're offering some coursework outside of the academic school day, the licenses are there to support them that way. With our adoption, what we will be receiving is all of our hard copy teacher resources. Our digital resources will be for teachers and students. Teachers will receive class sets of text and there will be additional text in the library and the purpose of the additional text in the library is for any, for students that need that physical hard copy at home. Within this adoption, we also have purposefully designed our professional learning over the course of the entire adoption for eight years. Our initial training will be two training dates where teachers will have the option of choosing a training in June or August. And then there will be three follow-up one hour training sessions where teachers will be invited throughout the academic year in order to get questions answered or, and we'll have a focus component for each of those PDs. In our following years, from 23 all the way on to 2030, that's very strange to say. But all the way through 2030, we will, we will have a summer training for either late higher teachers from the previous year and new higher teachers as well as two additional one hour PDs throughout the year. Any questions?
Any questions or comments from the board? Miss Gabby?
Thank you for surveying students. That is just awesome. That's all. That is my only comment. I mean, it's a great presentation, very, you know, clear. I'm not sure when our timeline is. I know tonight's just a first read. But it really looks like, you know, the process was very thorough and brought us a great recommendation. So thank you and thank you for asking the students.
Miss Scimonian?
So your four courses, right? How come I only see three books?
Okay, so the three course model, so like in math, when we went to integrated math one, math two, math three, where it was cyclical, right? So that there are two models out, three course or four course. Our four course keeps our courses individualized. We did not adopt a physics text.
That's what I was wondering.
So we're not adopting a physics text. We have one physics teacher out at Golden West High School. We proposed to her with that, with that text. And the textbooks did not meet what she currently has, the level of what she currently has. And so that's why we currently only.
So you're going to keep the current physics books. Is that correct? Is there still AP physics offering?
There is AP physics. Yes, we do have AP physics. Our AP textbooks are under a different timeline.
Any other questions or comments?
I did. I just want to thank you too, Breann. This is, I mean, talking, talking about the time that you guys spent with all of this and it's just incredible. I did have a question about the licenses. I didn't understand that part. Yeah. So they're digital licenses that we're doing because it's a digital textbook. So some of them are physically only, only digital licenses, but then with the physical textbooks we get, we get additional licenses on top of that. So our additional licenses are our banking of, of licenses in order to support our students that are re-engaging with the courses at a later date.
Thank you. I also want to echo trustee Gabby's comments on like student surveys, like 800 responses. That's amazing. And I think truly reflective and I'm glad that that student feedback was incorporated into this decision and recommendation. To follow up on trustee Gomoyan's point around physics and Golden West sort of being the exception, do we also offer physics at all of our other three sites? And do they also use the same textbook or what does that?
Right. So physics, LD Amonte has conceptual physics. Physics requires a special credential in order to teach. And at the, at this time, we don't necessarily have as many teachers in our district that hold that credential. And so in order to be able to offer, we have to have that, the teacher credential in that subject matter.
Gotcha. So it's just at LD right now?
Conceptual physics is at LD and then physics, which is different than conceptual physics, is at Golden West.
Thank you.
So the other, if you, well, first of all, earth science is AG, correct?
Yes, it is.
So then, so the kids that want to take four years of science, they would take, they would add the earth science. Is that correct? Well, there's AP biology, all those things too.
Yes. They, they certainly could take an earth science because it does also count as a science. Typically, students that are taking multiple years will take your biology, chemistry, and then they will either go to physics, anatomy, AP bio, AP chem.
And you know, last time, which was a long time ago, I looked at the new generation's science standards. There was a huge chunk that was earth science. So how are our students getting that earth science component?
So that's a component that we'll be working on over the course of the next year in terms of how do we make sure that the, there are opportunities for the students to engage in that either through our current course sequencing or looking at additional courses that we can develop.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, this is the first read. Thank you for the presentation. Our next item, our next item on our agenda is enclosure number 25, adoption of instructional materials, world language, Spanish and French, first read. Claudia Ardon Diaz, Director of Literacy.
Good evening, Board President Guerrero, interim superintendent Cardoza and Board members. I am Claudia Ardon Diaz, Director of Literacy, and tonight I am going to be presenting the first read for the second, for the secondary world language textbook adoption. I am joined this evening by Emmy Rourke, who's right over there. She's our teacher on special assignment and who has been an integral part in this process. So I want to thank her and say how much I appreciate her. I would also like to thank Belinda Sharamuka. She's a world language teacher on special assignment. She was not able to be here today, but I also wanted to thank her as well. So I would like to quickly begin just by reminding us of our focus. And I wanted to share that first one because it talks about strengthening English language learners' abilities, but it's really not just about the English learner's abilities. It's really about those language abilities. So when we are looking through this lens for our world language adoptions, we're looking, how do we help our students organize and elaborate their written responses? How do we help them with their thoughts? How do we help them with their thoughts and how do we help them engage? In collaborative conversations in different content areas, in this case in world languages. Again, I would like to remind you of our why and we heard it before with Ms. Phillips. So I just wanted to remind you how committed we are to that continuous improvement. Into providing our students with high quality instructional system. Where we equip our students and our teachers so they can have that access and that equity for all. And tonight I'm going to be focusing on that collective commitment that we focus also with our world language committee. Which is to communicate and collaborate effectively. So just to share our journey that we had with our world language standards in secondary. We, in September 2019, the State Board of Education. Adopted the world language standards for public school K-12. In 2019, our districts and had conducted PLC lead training on standards. And every school site had an opportunity to select a lead. And so they had the opportunity to engage in this training. In addition to that, our leads also attended. The Central California World Languages Project in Fresno State. So that was another. Way that we were able to equip our teachers. And in 2020, we adopted the world language frameworks stated. And so we was in the middle of COVID, right? So a lot was happening then. But even so, in 2021, our teachers were excited when they also wanted to expand that learning. And they also wanted to attend a conference in Fresno State on authentic text. So again, really thanking our teachers in spite of everything that was happening, they wanted to engage in that learning. The next slide that I'm going to share is just an overview of really the timeline, kind of a high level view. Of what happened during this adoption. So I wanted to focus on how in December, we as a team selected a committee, a teacher committee. And also lead, so we're going to help us with this process. We wanted to make sure that teachers. Had an opportunity to participate and really be part of this process. And so also in January, when we had our committee, we also engaged them and we had an opportunity to. Engage, even though it was through Zoom and creating rubrics. And in January, we also had gave teachers surveys in February, just kind of giving you an overview. We started our pilot with one of our programs Vista in March with Carnegie. And then in April, that's when we gathered together to look at the data and here we are today to make our recommendation. So as we created the committee, I would like to first thank all the teachers that engage in this work. It was definitely a lot of work and they were so open to the process. This process was open and available to all of our world language teachers in our district. Both programs that were under consideration were available to all secondary sites. You will note that American Sign Language adopted in 2017, 18. And because no publishers updated to align to the new standards, we did not go ahead and continue with that process. But again, I think all of our teachers that really engage in wonderful conversation and. The next slide shows really what the expectations were as they were engaging in this work. So it was not easy work. Number one, they had to know the standards. So we dove into that. Number two, they also needed to keep their PLCs, their grade level teams or their content teams. Really engage and letting them know in transparency where we were in that process. Department chairs also had to provide an area where they were going to provide the two textbook options. And so that for their colleagues and so they would also leave those comments. They were going to, committee members were also going to pilot both textbook options, so not just one, but both. And really collect that evidence of both and really looking at the framework, did it meet the criteria? And then at the end, come back and look at that data and help us to decide which would be a better fit for our district. So again, a lot of work and we really appreciate that. So as we looked at the programs, we definitely looked at the world languages framework. And in chapter 13 specifically, which has been one of my newest best friends to look at the instructional materials piece. And we looked at that chapter 13 because in there it has clearly aligned. What the program needs to include. First of all, like we mentioned, it has to be aligned to the standard. So that's a no brainer. But in addition to that, we were looking for strengths that needed to also that needed to have. It needed to be a program that was organized. It had to be logical. It has to be easy to use. It has to have good graphics. It also needed good assessment. We wanted to make sure that there was an array of diagnostic assessments. Formative assessments, summative assessments, really all of these that really were high quality standard space. And also we wanted to look, does it have a nice, clear placement opportunity? Do the assessment here provide clear placement opportunity and exit assessment as well? In category four, we also looked at the access and equity. Were they appropriate to use with all diff with all kids with different needs? In category five, in regards to instructional planning, looking at the lesson planning, what practice students got. What pacing was available as well. So all of those were areas that we used to discuss our textbooks. We also wanted to provide the teacher's voice. We wanted them to have an opportunity. Is there anything? That we missed? We read chapter 13, we know what the categories, but is there anything else? So we gave them an opportunity to also provide their input. And really what we found that all of their concerns were really met what was discussed in the program category. So that was really good. One thing that stood out was really the distance learning piece because that was new. So the teachers wanted to make sure that whatever program we decided to go with as a team, that it had that digital piece. So then with this, we went ahead and we continued with the pilot. So we piloted Vista. And so that was senderos and chima. And so the teachers were able to pilot that program. It was a three week pilot. They piloted, they were had to had different areas that they had to make sure that they practice. Make sure that they looked at the assessments, all of those pieces that we needed. So they were able to gather that correct data. After that, we piloted Carnegie, Quechevede and Tebranche. My friend teacher would probably not like the way I pronounced that, but that's okay. It was a long time ago. We also had the opportunity to look at Envoz Alta. And that is really Spanish for Spanish speakers. And I will talk a little bit more about this, but the, to sum it up a little bit. Our teachers decided that they wanted more options. So again, listening to that teacher voice, we decided that we were going to wait till the fall and I'll just. Share a little bit more information in regards to that. So then we were looking into that data. So here we have the data from the teachers. We were looking at the different pieces, that interpretive, the translating piece, that interpersonal piece. Can students hold the conversation? That presentational piece, can they present, can they speak, can they write about things? That grammar piece, understanding that the students, we learned language through context of language. And really that culture piece as well, that we learn language in the context of culture as well. So teachers, again, going back to those categories from chapter 13, 13. They looked at that based on the rubric that we created together. That's, that's the questions were aligned to those categories. And then we also wanted to get that student feedback because we felt that that student feedback was valuable. And so their rubric looked a little different. We wanted to make sure that we were listening to that student voice and through their perspective, through the eyes of a student. So really is, was it engaging? Was it, was there ease of use? What did they think about the online platform? What about the rubric? Was it authentic text? And did they have, what did they think about that access to that vocabulary? So what you see here is that data piece. So here's the data that we collected from the survey. You will see in the yellow, we have that Spanish, one, two and three. With the average on the right hand side. So we have the average of Vista. And we have the average of Carnegie. And you, if you see the results, you will notice even though we had averages clearly shared. We also had that for Spanish, which is in yellow, but also for French as well. But we also wanted to make sure that it was not just about the averages. We want our students to be able to dialogue and to discuss, and it's not always just about the numbers. So we will clearly share that Vista had the highest averages for the Spanish teachers. And also for Spanish students. And in regards to French, Carnegie had the highest for the teachers and also for the students as well. But as I mentioned before, it was more than just the numbers. We wanted to give the teachers an opportunity to dialogue. Once we met and we looked at the data and after, you know, some conversation, the Spanish teachers, they were clear, they wanted Vista. So there was no question about it. The French teachers, they looked at the data, but even though they had the data, they wanted to continue that conversation. So we did that. We gave them the opportunity to, okay, let's, let's table it right now and let's come back and let's discuss that again. And it actually took not just that one time, but it took another opportunity of speaking with different members of our team to make that recommendation. I just quickly wanted to share that we do have comments from our Spanish teacher. And basically to sum it up, really, they really enjoy how the program was organized, the variety of assessments. Again, hitting that chapter 13 that we mentioned before, so really looking at those categories. And looking also at the student voice, they also loved the website. That was a big piece that they loved in regards to the students and Vista specifically. They love how easy it was to use. They loved how that vocabulary was fun. So really. Again, listening to that student language and I'm not going to go over all of them. But I did want to provide the opportunity for you to have that in writing. We just, you know, and we also had the opportunity to have the teachers. Look at everybody's comments. So they went through every single comment. And also use that as they made the decision. So this was the French teachers comments that we wanted to share. And you will also notice that we have the, the French students comments and you will notice it's a lot less because. Really, French is a lot smaller, you know, cohort of students that take that, that those courses. But again, listening to those voices. So on behalf of the team of the world language textbook adoption, we are super excited to recommend for Spanish. This the higher learning senderos. And for the French team, we are really excited to recommend Carnegie for Tebranche. With those recommendations comes a program implementation plan. So we. Again, want to provide teachers with those teacher resources. So that's part of the program, those digital resources as well. That was a big piece for teachers and for students. We have digital workbooks that students really like. Again, providing students with those digital pieces. Remember that's one of the pieces of the teachers. We're really looking forward to. Having an opportunity just in case. We've gone through a lot with COVID. They wanted to make sure that students. Have those resources. So we have that. But we also wanted to provide those class sets of student texts. An additional text just in case, you know, a specific student needed that as well. We wanted to provide that. And in regards to professional learning, we have in August of 2022, 23. We have an overview, again, listening to the teachers and their feedback. That is what they were recommending. They would like to launch it early in August before school. Would start that we would get an overview training. And then we would like to, what they also in conversation is. Four days of curriculum training with sub coverage. So they're super excited about that to have that opportunity. And then in years to come, 23 to 30, really going back to that summer and really those trainings during the summer. New teacher training as well and then then doing a mid-year check-in and the end of the year check-in as well. So again, we would like to thank the committee. It was a lot of work. Emmy Rourke for all of her hard work. She's done so much and also Belinda as well. And we're excited to, to see what the board thinks. Any, any questions?
Are there any questions or comments from the board, Ms. Blair?
Thank you so much. Thank you again for just doing all of this hard work. And I did want to ask, I meant to ask Ms. Phillips this as well. Are these books available to look through at the Learning Center?
Yes, so they were made available March 1st through the 30th and we actually had it available and we. Have kept it available just in case. So if you do want to take a peek, they're still available as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I just want to say thank you. The curriculum department has done an amazing job with. I don't ever remember being this organized and having this kind of system in adopting textbooks. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, definitely want to echo that and say thank you. And again, thank you for the student voices. Do both of these programs or, or do, does one of them have a better? I know you mentioned more like dialogue, but I mean, I think really in a language, you learn it by speaking. And I mean, how do we increase that amount of time that students are speaking? You know, even outside of class. So do they both have? And do you feel like one is stronger of those opportunities for students to like speak into it and dialogue or back and forth?
So one of the things that the teachers really appreciated is opportunity to have that practice. And students also felt like it was authentic conversations. So both programs, the teachers felt based on the data that we have in their conversations, that that was a very good option. In addition to that, as I mentioned before. Part of our focus is really, it doesn't just come from the book, right? We know that it comes with good instruction. So as we look at our focus, going back to the beginning of it, we want to engage our students in those conversations, right? It's not only about English learners, but we want to have them organize and elaborate those written responses or thoughts. And engage in collaborative conversations in all content areas. So we, one of the things that we're realizing is that that doesn't happen, even though both programs we feel are solid. It happens with that training that goes behind those programs. And so that's what's going to accompany during those, those trainings for teachers.
Any other board member questions?
Just want to echo all the thanks to you and your team, all the teachers who participated in this committee and this very thorough process. I know there was a brief mention of ASL and so I just wanted to ask, do we offer American Sign Language at any of our sites? And if so, which ones? And also, does that also count towards the E through G language requirement?
I, I am going to actually have my partner Emmy work come in and answer that question. She is very much attuned with American Sign Language. So I'm going to give it to her.
American Sign Language is at Mount Whitney in Redwood. So we have it at two of our sites. It grew. I think two years ago, or maybe even just this past year at Mount Whitney. So we just grew the program and with that growth, they were asked, we did ask for their opinion if they wanted to adopt one and they said, hold off right now.
And then do you know if it counts towards the A through G world language requirement? Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Any other comments? Thank you. Mr. Priscilla, you want to say something?
Just real quick, I, I just want to thank publicly thank our teams here and as you, as you seen, what they've done is just. Created a more rigorous process. Adoptions are a huge investment, not just financially. But we are tied to the books for the next eight years. So what they did was really just take time to think through how they were going to do that to incorporate all those pieces. So our amazing TOSAs that you're here, both Scott and Emmy, just the tireless hours that they worked, put into that. And then also our coordinator Lori, and then as well as our two directors, I just want to publicly thank them because they did an amazing job.
Okay, that was the first read. That'll come back to us in our next meeting. Our next item on the agenda, thank you very much. Our next item on the agenda, student representative report. Miss, our student rep could not be with us tonight. So tonight, our area administrator, Rick Hamilton, will share the student administrative report.
Thank you, Board President Carrero, Board interim superintendent Cardoza. He's, he said, my name is Rick Hamilton. I'm the area administrator for Visalia Unified. And former student of Mount Whitney, class of 86. So I'm qualified to do the student report tonight. So we'll start out with VCIS. VCIS invites all to attend their VAPA performance of VCIS through time. This Saturday, May 14th at LJ Williams Theater, shows at 3:00 and 7:00 PM. Four VCIS students from the Health Science Pathway will be participating in a summer internship this year at Kuya Health Program. And then all the VCIS students that took the state competency exam on May 5th. In the CNA program earned their state certification. For Sequoia, Sequoia will host the takeover tour on May 12th to help message the problems with vaping. Sequoia will be hosting their soccer championships this Friday on the 13th. And then the Sequoia High School LGBTQ group will be hosting a movie night this Friday night, the 13th. And then seniors are looking forward to senior sunset and the end of the year barbecue coming over the last week of school. And then seniors are looking forward to Senior Sunset and the end of the year barbecue coming over the last week of school. At VTAC, VTAC FFA will be hosting their Spring Banquet on the nineteenth of this month to recognize students' accomplishments within the FFA program. VTAC hosted a successful back-to-school night on the fifth for current and future parents and students where students showed off their skills and some even brought their dancing horses to perform. VTAC FFA will be offering internships to five students this summer to complete one hundred hours for a five hundred dollar scholarship through the Scholarship Foundation. And then VTAC had their first sports rally this year to recognize the students who competed our various comprehensive high schools that also attend VTAC. At LD Monte High School, LD hosted their rally for the spring sports last Friday. Theme of the rally was cars and they honored baseball, softball, dive, swim, and track. Link Crew this week is hosting Do Be Nice Week. There'll be dress-up days, dressing as your favorite celebrity. Lunchtime activity is a full week of a basketball tournament. And then the Friday before spring break, LD hosted their takeover rallies. The activity was meant to remind students of the effect of vaping and how it can harm a person in so many ways. Mount Whitney, Mount Whitney is looking forward to their takeover rally with radio Q ninety-seven on May eleventh that will highlight again vape and drug prevention. Mount Whitney celebrated their annual Mr. Pioneer Week with the addition of Miss Pioneer Week. This year, the first ever Miss Pioneer title was awarded to Miss Annalise Bueno, and this year's twenty-twenty-two Mr. Pioneer was Jacob Gill. Mount Whitney enjoyed prom hosted by Golden West and everything was extremely nice. And then last week, Mount Whitney students and staff enjoyed Cultural Food Day celebration with an extended lunch. Clubs received donations from vendors and students danced and enjoyed live music throughout campus. Redwood, Redwood was in charge of centerpieces for prom this year, and students had such a great time getting everything ready to go. Redwood is excited for the annual Powderpuff Game this Thursday. The students are excited to watch juniors and seniors battle it out on the football field. And then ASB elections finished last Friday, and they are excited to announce their new Executive Board of Officers. And finally, last but not least, Golden West High School had the successful spring sports rally last Friday. They are honoring their seniors tonight at a softball game against Redwood. And then last but not least, I have a little picture show for you. Golden West was our host for prom this last Saturday at the Convention Center. Where almost eighteen hundred students from across the Visalia High Schools enjoyed a night at the Enchanted Forest. So we'll just have some group photos, just just to show you that that prom is back and normal has returned to our district. So it was really a great weekend and around our city for restaurants, our limo drivers, our families, our students, everybody. Got involved in prom again, and it was just a wonderful night. That's the entrance to prom. We got got to go through the archways again, and our students got to experience just again, extremely wonderful night. And that concludes the presentation.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to board member reports. Ms. Blair?
Thank you. So I was able to go to a luncheon that was put on by the Link Learning Academies for the Visalia Partners in Education. And that was so exciting. It was really nice to see the Learning Academies, while the work-based learning coordinators nominated business partners who they were recognized, who supported their programs. One of the people that was recognized was Nick Macia, who's here. And it was just a really nice luncheon. It was just amazing to see the partners that we have in our community and how they're serving our students and how we're working together. It was awesome. I really loved being a part of that. And then I got to go the next day to the Visalia Adult School Celebration, which was amazing. They celebrated staff, teachers, graduates. They had an amazing teacher that it seemed like everyone loved her. She just, she was retiring or going somewhere else. And it was just a beautiful, I was so emotional. There were so many cool people who worked so hard, their persistence and just working to get their their degree, their their diplomas. It was amazing. And then on May second, I got to go and walk through the LISA Project for the first time, which I had never done before. And that is for child abuse prevention awareness, and it was very impactful. I didn't, I didn't really even know or understand what it was. It was hosted by Redwood this year. And basically, you're walking into, they set up sheets so it looks like you're walking into kids' bedrooms or kids' homes. And there's a picture of a child on the wall, and these are real stories where a child is talking about abuse that happens to them. And you're listening to it over headphones. It was, it was very intense. I'm really glad I did it. And afterwards, there's quite a few resources within the community that are there with paperwork, with things that you can fill out, places you can go, things you can write down. And what the lady who is running it said was, when students come through, the thing that she hears the most is, we didn't feel like we could talk about this until we walked through. And now we feel like we are able to have a voice and and share with each other about this. So it kind of took the stigma away. So that was actually great. And I just wanted to say, even though we're a week late, but National Teacher Appreciation Week was just, we just want to thank you, teachers, for everything that you do. You're incredible. Yeah, I can't say enough about our teachers at the in this district. Thank you.
Ms. Case Versalino?
No report.
Mr. Viegas?
Thank you. I had the opportunity to visit Highland Elementary, where I talked to Principal Pareto and really want to give her major kudos and all of her staff for a wonderful back-to-school night. They had great attendance. They brought out music, food, vendors, I think even at like Badio Campesina Radio Station out there. And I know it was an emotional night for her and all of her staff and just seeing all the families come together and walk the halls for the first time and, you know, for some in like two years. And also, I thought it was very, very sweet that for Teacher Appreciation Week, students and parents actually brought flowers for teachers, and then Principal Pareto had bases, and not just for teachers, but for every staff member at that school. So major kudos to all the wonderful things going around in all of our schools and major thanks to all of our teachers as well. I'm glad to see that there was such a focus tonight on increasing college and career readiness, A through G. I'm very happy that, you know, we're we're talking about this more. I know math has been a central point of discussion with our board in the past, and I think it's very important aligning our math graduation standards, A through G. And I hope it's something we can revisit, you know, in the future soon. But I also want to bring up other areas in particular, right? This is something I asked our curriculum team about in areas in which our policies don't align with A through G graduation requirements. And as we talk about world language approval and textbook, I want to also bring up the fact that I would like us to see us as a district, you know, implement a policy that would align our graduation requirement with A through G requirements in world languages and in performing arts, right? As we talk about electives and the needs for students to be exposed to these electives and experiences. Currently, our graduation requirements are one year of visual performing arts or world languages, whereas A through G is one year of the same VAPA performing art, and then two years of the same world language, right? And so as we think about increasing A through G, whether we're talking about LCAP or College and Career Readiness or expanding the CAC program, which I think is wonderful, I think this is another potential positive step that we can take as a board and as a district to ensure that our students are increasing in college and career readiness and A through G completion. Other than that, I also wanted to share that I was able to complete two days of training with the California School Board Association, focused on student learning and achievement, policy and judicial review, as well as finance. I know Trustee Blair has also been there with me in a few sessions and working towards that mashes in governance and trying to do my best to learn as best I can to be an effective board member. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Escabeau.
I'll be quick, but I do want to say, echo that, that thank you to all of our teachers. Last week was Teacher Appreciation, and we definitely, definitely appreciate all that you do. And I think we're coming up on Classified Appreciation Week, and thank you to Mr. De Maio back there. He's organizing a like job shadowing where we're going to get to go out and shadow some people. So that will be super fun. And also, scholarship nights are going on with at all the high schools. And I was able to go present some awards last night at LD, and we have some amazing students. When you just hear all that they are doing and involved with, but also thank you just to all of our community support there too. We have so many organizations and even just different memorial funds that give out, I think they gave out eight, over eighty thousand dollars last night and are giving out even more than that at at some of the other high schools. So thank you to our community for that too. And that's it.
Ms. Gonian?
I'm gonna try to be quick as well. I was very pleased tonight because the majority of the board agenda was about student learning. That is amazing. I just want to follow up on the AG, our A to G completers. And I'm just going to give you a list of things we're doing to support our kids that they are A to G ready. One is our California College Guidance Initiative that kids as young as sixth grade can have access, start building portfolios to go to college. We have LRISE, which is helping our ELD kids get proficient in academic language and English so that they can go on and go to college. We have three AG completion improvement grants. We have the Advising Corps, which we heard today. We will be implementing soon, I hope, our third year of math. Plus, we do offer higher math courses. We have AP Stats, AP Calculus, AVID, which is amazing. Our college and career, I see Department, I see Page Levering constantly reaching out to kids newsletters to help kids and parents navigate the whole, the whole college thing. We have supports for our Native Americans and African-American students. We have social emotional supports for our students. And we have academies and career pathways because not all our kids did desire to go to a CSU or a UC. And you can see when we heard our Mount Whitney Academy on Health Science, these kids graduate with certifications and can get jobs right out of high school. So bravo, VUSD.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm not going to elaborate a whole lot. I'm just going to run down a list of things that I did. I visited Pinkin Elementary School. I went to the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce Installation Dinner last week. I also was at the Bee Pie Recognition. I went to the Adult School Ceremony where they, the person that left or resigned, she became a nurse practitioner. Okay, so I also went to Family Resource Center, Jim Sullivan, you have nice resource, that's a good center. I went to the WYL Swimming Playoffs at Golden West, which involved all our schools and also attended the recognition awards last week. All board members did that except for one. And then I went to the Te Cove, Tulare County School Board Association, which they had the spring training. And that was on the Harvard Project, or I think that's the name of it. Anyway, and then I went to the Golden West Takeover. If you get a chance, there was a list sent to us and your upcoming reports, and it has the dates of the schools. It's a very, very good project. A lot of things go on there, and it's during the lunch hour. But I want to talk about and just highlight the Washington Elementary Fatherhood Project, which I went to today, and thank you, Jim. Where are you at? I really want to thank you for that. I've been asking for that for over ten years, probably about fifteen, if anybody knows me well. And I, what I saw today was the fathers of children that attend elementary school at Washington. Okay, and it's very important because, you know, we talk about discipline, behavior, kids acting out or doing things. You know, these dads, some of these dads need some support. And, you know, when you, when you strengthen the father, you're strengthening the family. You really are. And so anyway, that was a real good project, and I'll turn it over to our interim superintendent. But before I do, I want to say thank you to our teachers. It was Teacher Appreciation Week, and we do, we do appreciate everything that happened. Mr. Cardoza?
Really ditto to that. I was just going to say, I encourage all of us to continue to celebrate our, our teams and the people we work side by side with and and those unsung heroes that are in the, you know, shadows that we don't see every day. So make sure that we do that through this month and celebrate all our employees. So we appreciate you all, and thank you.
Staff dismissal. We'll move on with our agenda. And we have administrative panel recommendations. Enclosure number twenty-six. Do I have a motion?
All motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Blair, second by Ms. Case Versalino?
Nope.
Was that, did I get that backwards?
Yeah, Miss, no, it was Miss Blair.
Okay, good. You got it?
Yeah.
All in favor?
President Guerrero.
Yes.
Board Member Viegas.
Yes.
Board Member Blair.
Yes.
Board Member Case Versalino.
Yes.
Board Member Gabby.
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion carries six, one, absent.
Enclosure number twenty-seven is recommended suspended expulsions. Do I have a motion?
All motion.
Motion by Mr. Viegas. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Gabby. All in favor?
Board Member Viegas.
Yes.
Board Member Blair.
Yes.
Board Member Case Versalino.
Yes.
Board Member Gabby.
Yes.
I vote yes. President Guerrero.
Yes.
Motion carries six, one, six, and one absent.
We'll move on to our general agenda. Our general agenda on enclosure number twenty is a public hearing resolution adopting Level One Developer Fee Justification Study. And I will now open the public hearing. Mr. Axel Condo, internal auditor.
Good evening, Board President Guerrero, interim superintendent Cardoza, members of the board and of the public. My name is Axel Condo, and I'm honored to serve as the internal auditor for Visalia Unified. So today I'm here to present you with a developer fee justification study that was performed and put together by School Works Incorporated. And the goal of this meeting is to ask the board to approve the justification study, the report itself. So the presentation that I have is the same presentation that Mr. Ken Reynolds, president of School Works, presented about two weeks ago. It does have some element from Level Two, but I will only focus on the Level One items and then point some contracts here and there. So. Okay, so the developer fees are usually a common source of funding for school facility of Visalia Unified. That's what we use, like in order to build new elementary school, in order to have portables at the school site and various things like that. So Ed Code, Education Code seventeen-six-two-zero, basically authorized the governing board of school district to impose fees, developer fees, in order to mitigate the impact of growth, development growth to own the school. And as part of that, the State Allocation Board, back in February of this year, February twenty-twenty-two, they are the agency that essentially set what that fee would be. So for this year, it's four seventy-nine dolap per square foot, four dollars, many nine cents per square foot for residential development and seventy-eight cents per square foot for commercial development. And as opposed to like, Level Two is individually based on the school, but the Level One is 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 set by the state. So every school qualifies, usually will have the same fee. So on this slide, you can see the Level One from two thousand and twenty, which was four dollars, eight cents for residential and sixty-six cents for commercial. And you can also see the the new fee that was adopted by the State Allocation Board. And I wanted to point out, sometime I get a question about, we also have the self-storage fees, because part of the calculation that goes into developer fee justification study, it's basically stated that if the, the each industry has a generation rate, and they also have like a net cost per square foot. So if that cost is below the seventy-eight cents, then you have to charge the lesser, the lesser of the two. So that's kind of how that works. So with that. So this slide is about Level Two. The only thing I wanted to mention here is that most school district do have access to Level One, and they could do a justification study, which is where you establish the nexus stating that you have costs that are coming that will which is where you establish the nexus stating that you have costs that are coming that will, that, you know, allow you to have those fees cost you to new development. While for level two, you have to meet two of those four criteria, which I said I meet about three of them, and you also have to do the school facilities analysis for that. So that's one difference between the two study. So as far as, so we could skip this slide. There's not much here, but. Okay, so on the next one, you can see kind of the impact, how much it will cost for permit for home, that's seventeen hundred fifty-five square foot. How much it will cost on the level one at four dollars, seventy-nine cents. So you could see that here. And this slide state use of level two fee, but it's, it's any developer fees that you could use for that. So any developer fees, you could use them to mitigate the impact of growth. So if you need additional portables, if you need new schools, if you need to acquire land in order to build school later, those are some of the authorized use of developer fees. Or if you need to pay for COP for completed new school that you built, things like that. And as far as like the district facility statistics, one other thing that just on it, we do have, we do have a lot of portable classrooms. So you could see the, the number on that slide. Also, when you look at developer fee study versus demographic study, they, they look at things different way because when you talk about developer fees, you do not include portable classrooms in your classrooms. And when you talk about demographic study, any space that can be used as a classroom is considered a classroom. So that's why sometimes there could be different number in those. But that's, it's meant that way because hopefully with developer fee, you kind of reduce your need for intermediate space or relocatable space. Okay, so the summary, as far as the developer fee goes, the developer fee justification study, the process has changed. So the way work is that we will ask to vote on the study. And then after that, we were asked to vote on the fee. And the effective date just has to be within, after sixty days, after the, the, the date of the vote. And. So I, I may decide. We, well, it was done a little while ago, but it's kind of show what the process is. So usually when we, for this time and how we normally do things, that we will send a copy of the study to the city and the county at least forty-five days before. So back on March twenty-third. Yes, so back on March twenty-third. And, and March twenty-third, the city and the Building Industry Association got a copy. The county got it on March twenty-fifth. So, and the study was posted on the website and available in the district office on March twenty-second. We have different notices that we have to do in the newspaper. But there was a change this year with Assembly Bill six oh two. So now we have for, for level one developer fee, we have to give a thirty-day notice for thirty days from today, which is the day that we're voting on those item. So we did send our notices. The first notice went out on April eight and then another one, April twenty-sixth. So it just has some, some of the things that, that we kind of do. And we, we had discussion with the Building Industry Association as Friday, where they were able to voice their opinion about different things so that we can include them in our recommendations. So. So they are, as, after a meeting, we didn't have any, any issue with a level one study. And they also had made a recommendation about this rental self-storage that we, we both agree on. So that will be part of our recommendation on the next item.
Okay, are there any questions or comments from the board? Okay, we need a motion on this to accept this study.
Okay, so that was my question. We are motioning to accept this study, correct? Okay, well, I'll motion to accept.
Is there a second?
All second.
Set, there's been motion and second? All in favor?
Board member Blair.
Yes.
Board member Casebar Saleno.
Yes.
Board member Gabi.
Yes.
I vote yes. President Guerrero.
Yes.
Board member Viegas.
Yes.
Motion carries six, one, absent.
Okay, now we move on to, I will close that public hearing and I will open another public hearing. And this is for enclosure number twenty-nine, public hearing resolution, increasing level one developer fees and adoption of SICA notice and of exception. And Mr. Axel Kondo is presenting.
Okay, so on, on this one, I don't have a presentation per se, but but we, we did discuss the study. So basically the study has justified the, the district to have the residential developer fee level one to be set at four dollars and seventy-nine cents per square foot. And the resident, the commercial level one fee to be set at seventy-eight cents per square foot with the expect, the exception of the rental self-storage where we are asking the board to, to set that fee at twenty-three cents per square foot, which is the same as it was back in, when we said it in 2020. So this is what we are asking the board to do to approve the resolution that set those fees.
Okay, I need a motion to adopt the resolution.
I have a question.
Sure.
So the resolution is being revised, is that correct?
No, the, the, the final, the final reservation, the final version of the resolution is in what you, you, you've received.
Okay.
So it's, it's not being revised. Yeah.
Okay.
I did have one question. I was just wondering what kind of community input you got after you put that in the newspaper.
Well, when we put that in the newspaper, I haven't, I would say we haven't had, we haven't had much input about it. I've talked to, you know, I usually would reach out to the, the Building Industry Association because, you know, the builder, they're, they're the one oftentimes that will have more concern about that. So they, you know, we have discussion and they voiced what they had issue with, which is not, it's not the justification, it's not the justification study per se. They had, I think the justification study data law for thirty-three cents per square foot for rental self-storage, but they said like that was a bit much. So we agree that we will, we will keep the cost of the fee the same as in years past and, and they, they seem to be all in agreement on that when I hear from the chairman. So, so yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
If I could just add maybe a little bit to that. The comments, the, the notifications went out in March on the twenty-second and the only comments that we received back were last Friday.
Okay, so I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Okay, there's been a motion. Is there a second?
I second.
Second.
Second, yes.
Second by Ms. Skimonian. All in favor?
Board member Casebar Saleno.
Yes.
Board member Gabi.
Yes.
I vote yes. President Guerrero.
Yes.
Board member Viegas.
Yes.
Board member Blair.
Yes.
Motion carries six, one, absent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will close the public hearing. Now, we're going to move into enclosure number thirty-two, recommendation and resolution to eliminate particular kinds of classified services, classified positions. This is a final notice enclosure thirty-two. Andy DeMayo, administrator of HRD.
Good evening, President Guerrero and Superintendent Cardozo. Axel threw me a bet. I was expecting two more things. So anyway, thank you, Ms. Somavia. I am here tonight to bring back to you a resolution that you had already spent time talking about last March. This is the annual thing that we do when we look to make some changes to our classified staffing. So this resolution is asking you to once again consider the elimination of fifteen classified positions that we have. And I need a motion tonight to make that consideration if you would be so kind.
Are there any questions or comments?
I, I just wanted to thank Ms. Somavia for clarifying some questions I had around several of these positions that were in fact going to be expanding hours for some of these positions and not completely eliminating them per se. So thank you for clarifying those questions.
Okay, would you like to make a motion?
I'll motion to approve.
All second.
Okay, there's been a motion or a second? All in favor?
Board member Gabi. Yes, and remember I want to shadow somebody fun. I vote yes. President Guerrero.
Yes.
Board member Viegas.
Yes.
Board member Blair.
Yes.
Board member Casebar Saleno.
Yes.
Motion carries six, one, absent.
Thank you.
Okay, so thank you. We're going to move on to enclosure number thirty-three. Resolution in the matter of ordering regular governing board member elections on November the eighth, Mr. Cardozo.
Okay, so we have a resolution that orders the election of the three VISA Unified board members and it has certain specifications. So I'm going to go through that and then we'll go through the resolution. So in the matter of ordering governing board member elections, specifications are as follows. Election code thirteen oh two, ten four oh four point five and ten four oh five point seven authorize school districts and community colleges districts to establish the election day for governing board members to regularly occur on the same day as a statewide direct primary election, the statewide general election or the general municipal election is held. Two, the Board of Supervisors has received and approved a resolution from this board establishing election of governing board members on the same day upon which the statewide general election is held. Three, education code section fifty-three twenty-two provides that whatever an election for governing board member, excuse me, whenever an election for governing board member is ordered, the governing board shall by resolution provide for specifications of the election order, which shall be delivered to the county superintendent of the schools and officer conducting the election, not less than one hundred and twenty-three days prior to the date set for the election. Four, other election of school official, school districts or other public agencies may be held in whole or part within the territory of this district and it is to the advantage of the district to consolidate therewith. And five, this district uses a bi-trusty area method of electing board members and has established seven separate trustee areas for which board member elections are staggered in alternating election years. Pursuant to the bi-trusty area F, area method of election, each incumbent board member and candidate for that seat must reside in one of the seven trustee areas and only registered voters residing in that trustee area may vote for said incumbent or candidate. Now therefore be it resolved as follows. The above recitals are true and correct. Two, the board hereby orders an election to be held in trustee areas one, two, three, four, and six in this district on the eighth day of November twenty twenty-two for the purpose of electing four members from the trustee area one, two, three, and four for four-year terms and one member from trustee area six for a two-year term for the governing board of the district in accordance with the following specifications. A, the election should be held on Tuesday, November eighth. B, the purpose of election is to choose four members of the governing board for this district from trustee areas one, two, three, and four for four-year terms and one member from trustee area six for two-year term. The candidate statement shall be paid for by the candidate. Election code section thirteen thirty, three oh nine provides procedures for filing and indigent candidate. Candidate statement shall be limited to two hundred words. In the event of a tie, the winner of the election shall be determined by a lot at a time and place designated by the board. The district shall reimburse the county for the actual costs incurred by the county elections official in conducting the general election upon receipt of a bill stating the amount due as determined by the election officials. For this board hereby requests the consent and the consolidation of this election with other elections to be held in the whole or in part in the territory of this district, of the district pursuant to education code section fifty-three forty and elections code section ten four hundred. The clerk, five, the clerk and board is ordered, of this board is ordered to deliver copies of this resolution not less than one hundred and twenty-three days prior to the date set for the election to the county superintendent of schools who shall deliver the order of the election to the Tulare County Elections officials and if applicable to the election official of any other county in which the election is being to be held as required by education code fifty-three twenty-four. Six, the board requests that the county superintendent publish the notice of the election in the following newspaper, which is a newspaper of general circulation that is regularly circulated in this territory, which is VISA times Delta. So with that, we will need a motion.
So before we do the motion, I, I think Delia had a comment here. Delia, you sent a note to me.
Testing. So Mr. Cardozo first mentioned that it was three areas, but he did clarify when he read the resolution that it was actually for the five areas.
Okay, okay, it's five areas. We got that. Okay.
And I want to clarify, that was my fault on the BAI.
Don't worry about that. Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
All motion. All second.
Okay, motion is made by Casebar Saleno, second by Ms. Blair. All in favor?
President Guerrero.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Board member Viegas.
Yes.
Board member Blair.
Yes.
Board member Casebar Saleno.
Yes.
Board member Gabi.
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion carries six, one, absent.
Okay, our last item on the agenda is board policy revisions, adoptions, deletions. This is the first read superintendent, interim superintendent Doug Cardozo.
Okay, so we brought these. Our committees worked through the board policies. There were a few recommendations and changes. So this is something for you to take a look at tonight and make any other recommendations or changes that you see need to be done.
Does any board member, would any board member like to pull any of those items?
And just for clarification, this is just the first read and then we.
Right, and you'll have an opportunity to pull an item when we read it again in our next meeting. So seeing that there's none, I will, this is the last item on the agenda, so I will adjourn the meeting.